Good evening, everybody. We're actually going to get started, but we're going to flip the presentations as one of our individuals that have been given a presentation is on his way. He'll be here in a few minutes. So we'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council. The City Council serving as this accessory agency to the redevelopment agency board, September 5th, 2017. This is the presentation period for 5:30. I'm going to have the police chief meet me down front and we'll start with item number two, recognition of Officer Yessenia Barriola, inauguration recipient of the Vega Zarebny Award from Christopher's Clubhouse.
Good evening, everyone. Come on in, pull up a chair. We've got plenty of chairs. And actually, the first presentation, I'm not going to do a whole lot of speaking. I know that may shock most of you. But I actually would like to turn it over to Micah Moulton, who is not only the founder, but the director of Christopher's Clubhouse.
Well, Mayor Matos, and honorable City Council member, thank you so much, allowing me the privilege to come here and speak. Again, my name is Micah Moulton, and I am the founder of Christopher's Clubhouse. In 1995, for those of you who don't know about Christopher's Clubhouse, I'll tell you a little bit about it. In 1995, while I was living in my very small hometown in Illinois, my 10-year-old son was playing with his friends, and then he was approached by a stranger, and who was somebody who lived in our neighborhood. And this recently released offender ended up abducting my child, torturing him, brutalizing him, and murdering him. At the time, I was at a loss as to why this could happen to my son. I mean, you know, we eat dinner together, my kids say please and thank you, I told them, "Don't talk to strangers." I didn't know what to do. But then I learned that telling our kids isn't enough, and that we need to teach them how to be safe. So I started researching, and I created programs and used best practices, and did a lot of, lot of research to teach kids in a fun and interactive way. Well, 10 years ago, I moved to the Coachella Valley, and I quickly incorporated the organization here. We have trained tens of thousands of children, and we've grown the organization to include teens, women, men, and our senior citizens. During the days of searching for my son, the weeks of investigation, and the months of trial, my law enforcement community was an amazing resource and backbone to my confusion. They gave me the strength, guidance, and support I needed to get through the worst thing that a parent could ever imagine to endure. And this year, we've nicknamed our gala "The Power of Ten," because we're celebrating 10 years of serving the Coachella Valley and having trained tens of thousands of children right here, all in honor of my 10-year-old. And we want to ensure that our law enforcement community is recognized for all the work that they do and the heroes they are to our society. So we created the Vega Zarebny Award in honor of Gil Vega and Leslie Zarebny, who made the ultimate sacrifice last year in Palm Springs. We sent nomination forms to every city chief and every sheriff in the community, and every substation as well, and asked for one officer to be nominated. And in addition to being selected for this nomination, at our 10th anniversary gala, the officer will also receive a $1,000 travel scholarship provided by Christopher's Clubhouse to be able to attend a training anywhere in the United States, will pay for whatever they need, so that they can go to training to learn more stuff about protecting our community and our children, and bring it back here, so that we have that. So our blue ribbon panel was made up of current and retired law enforcement, and they unanimously voted on one officer. And this officer is an exceptional asset to the community. She provides guidance to students as the school resource officer. She spearheaded the return of the Explorer Program to the department, as well as the Public Safety Academy. She instills leadership, discipline, and dedication to the students, and is a shining example of these qualities. Her demonstrated leadership, dedication to the youth programs, and the life skills she provides to the students make her the outstanding choice to receive the Vega Zarebny Award. So we're thrilled to announce that Desert Hot Springs Police Officer Yessenia Barriola will receive the Vega Zarebny Award on October 14th at the 10th Anniversary Light of Hope Awards Gala. So we've also asked her and a guest to join us tomorrow evening for a fundraiser that we're doing. We're just doing a quick fundraiser in Palm Springs, but we're going to introduce her there to everybody. There's going to be a good crowd, so she's got to come to that fundraiser, our fun Hawaiian fundraiser we're doing. But the gala is the big one. We'll also be giving awards to different people in the community, as well as some of our volunteer instructors, so we're really excited about it. So, thank you. And we thank all of law enforcement for everything they do. I found out how important it is to have them and the knowledge that they instill. And it's very heartwarming to me to be able to give back to them.
As we are, we're always very proud of our officers here in Desert Hot Springs. We wanted to recognize you from the mayor and the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, in recognition for being the inaugural recipient of the Vega Zarebny Award from Christopher Clubhouse. We thank you for your hard work and dedication to our community. And I know the chief probably has a couple words, too, but thank you.
And we do have a lot of great officers. Matter of fact, some more of them would be here if they weren't out working so hard this evening. But we could not be happier that Yessenia is with this department, the service that she provides, the mentorship that even I don't think she is aware of. I've had a number of parents talk to me and tell me how much they love her and what she does for their children that she does not even know about and is aware of. So we're very lucky to have her. I couldn't be prouder to be working with her, so congratulations.
It's a true honor tonight to take on a project that the chief wanted to in the community by recognizing individuals that go up and beyond in our community. So tonight, he came to me a couple months ago, and he had a young gentleman here in our community that did a heroic, say it's heroic, duty in our local McDonald's. So I'd like to invite up Mr. Gutierrez Wilmans. And anyone from the McDonald's company that would like to come up with and stand with him and keep him calm, because I understand he's a little nervous, and he has about a three-hour speech to give. I'm joking. I'm joking. Yes. And then the chief's going to explain more, and we have some representatives here from other offices.
So people do things in our community every day that really go unrecognized. And when I heard about this incident, I thought, this is something that clearly somebody needs to be recognized for. So the situation was back on May 8th, that there was a gentleman in the McDonald's restroom that had some mental health issues, and, for lack of a better term, was using the restroom pretty much for a shower, and just dominating the bathroom. One of the customers went in and asked him to leave so that other people could use the restroom, and this person basically pulled him into the bathroom, proceeded to physically assault him, and then rob him of his wallet and his cellphone. So the employees go to the bathroom to see what this commotion is. Andreas opens the door and sees this, there's a lot of blood in there. He doesn't know if this individual, and the suspect is still in the bathroom, assaulting our victim. He doesn't know if he has a weapon, nothing. And Andreas tells one of the managers, "Somebody go call 911. Everybody else, get out of here." He then locks himself in the bathroom with the suspect and the victim, and he keeps the suspect pushed up against the wall so he can no longer assault him, as he stands over the victim to stop him from being assaulted. And that is truly heroic. I mean, he doesn't know whether the person had a gun or not, he could have been injured. And it's just amazing, very touching, that he has that courage to step up and protect somebody who he doesn't know. He could have just ran from there and said, "Somebody call 911 and wait for the police," and he got involved. And so I know there's a number of family that are here, McDonald's, not only McDonald's employees, but people that go to McDonald's and like Andreas and see him in there and talk to him. He's got some of his, I'll call them friends, at the back of the room. Come on in, boys, at the back of the room and sitting over here to support him as well. So from the Police Department, Andreas is receiving the very first Chief of Police commendation for his heroics. And then, I know the mayor has an award and will speak, but congratulations and thank you.
From the mayor's office and from the mayor and the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, we hereby honor you, Andreas Gutierrez Wilmans. In recognition of your courageous acts on May 8th, 2017, when you risked your own safety without hesitation, your selfless and heroic actions are worthy of our highest recognition. On behalf of the mayor and the City Council, thank you for what you did in our city. Councilmember Zavala, who also represents and now works for our county supervisor, Manuel Perez, has a certificate also.
I'm just going to lower it a few feet. Well, on behalf of Supervisor Vivian O'Perez's office, I would just really like to thank you for your courage in helping the elderly in our community, and it was truly an altruistic act of strength and compassion and courage, and we're lucky to have you, so thank you very much.
Do I have anybody from the congressman's office? They were going to show, they might be late. But I do have a state senator's office, Glenn Miller, who is the director.
Good evening. It's wonderful to be here on behalf of Senator Jeff Stone. And when you hear about these kind of issues that happen, and it happens on a daily basis, and actually have somebody step in and do what they needed to do and do the right thing, it's very refreshing, especially with the young man, even as big as he is. It is very refreshing. But on behalf of California State Senator Jeff Stone, the 1 million people we represent and the state of California, we want to thank you for your selfless service to others. Congratulations.
And from our Assemblyman's office here, District 58, Eduardo Garcia's office, Steve Brown.
On behalf of the Assembly member who honestly wishes he could be here personally to present this to you, unfortunately, he's up in Sacramento. But again, we have from the California State Assembly, certificate of recognition for your exemplary service. And other words that come out in here are courage, leadership, distinguished citizen, valiant efforts, and they all describe you perfectly, so thank you very much.
And our congressman's office has just walked in.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Hernán Quintas. I'm a press secretary for Dr. Raul Ruiz. He also wishes he was here. As you know, he just landed in DC, busy day, as you could imagine. So again, we would like to congratulate you, Andres Gutierrez Wilmans, for an awesome thing that you did, and people here, I'm sure, are so proud of you. So thank you so much. And again, I will present you with a certificate of congressional recognition. Congratulations.
Now, I know you don't want to speak, but is anybody from McDonald's would like to say a few words?
Mayor, thank you. Members of the City Council, thank you very much. We are truly blessed to have him with us. And I think as we go through what we all go through on a daily basis, we read, we hear, we feel, we see, and then we come across Andreas. And I think it's just a great benefit to all of us that he has all the characteristics that he does. From our standpoint, we're very, very proud. We know that this is a major step for him, and we have great plans for him. He doesn't know it yet, but there's a lot of wonderful things that are going to happen as he goes through his training and becomes more and more an active and valuable part of our management teams here in the desert. So Andreas, thank you very much. You did it.
I'm just going to steal this for a second, in case no one knows who he is. This is Dick Schellhop, who's the owner of McDonald's. Not only ours, but what, 919 of them in the valley? 32 of them in the valley, so I think I've hit L-32 of them.
You don't have to say anything, right? Did you want to say anything? You sure? Yeah, I know you love that. With that said, we're, he's a little shy, we don't want to force him to the mic, but we're going to get everybody up here, all the representatives, and we'll take some group pictures, and we'll be adjourned until 6:00 PM. All right, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, and the City Council serving as this accessory agency to the redevelopment agency board for September 5th, 2017. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember McKee.
Present.
Councilmember Zavala. Mayor Pro Tem Parks. And Mayor Mattis.
Is there anybody from the Ministerial Fellowship and/or would like to give an invocation tonight? I see none. We'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag presentation will be given by Troop 1606. Please rise. Please rise.
[inaudible] for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna move on to the city attorney's report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have no reportable action.
All right, move to the approval of the agenda tonight. At this point, the City Council will approve the agenda, including the consent calendar, unless they want an item pulled off the consent calendar.
So moved.
Any discussion? Please vote.
I haven't put motion up yet.
Sorry. Somebody needs to push the button. There we go. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Move on to public comments. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any persons may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. Our first speaker tonight is Glenn Miller and followed by Steve Brown.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council members, staff.
Since I'm here on behalf of Senator Jeff Stone. He sends his regards from Sacramento. Session is about over and he's gonna be back in the district. He wanted you to know he'd like to meet with the mayor, the council, and staff to discuss anything that he might be able to do for your grants. We are working with Eduardo Garcia's office and Assemblyman and a few others from the state about the park bond and some other tax money that we're looking SB1 and that to come back in. We'd like to know your needs and concerns. Our office is in Indio on Smur Street. We're always open and we just wanted to let you know that the senator will be in the office at least two days a week till the end of the year and that we'd like to be able to meet with you and if there's anything we can do, we're here to help you. So, anything I can answer, any questions for anyone?
[inaudible].
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. SB 35. We need to have a discussion about that, I think.
More than happy to have you in the office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
More of a statement.
Yes.
Or demand.
Thank you very much.
I like it. All right, anything else? Okay, Mr. Brown, representing Assemblyman Garcia's office.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Mattis, staff and community members. It's an honor and privilege for me to be here tonight representing Assemblymember Eduardo Garcia and being among so many good friends as well. So, thank you. Just quickly, Assemblymember asked me, just as Glenn just said, it is the last two weeks of the first session, legislative session. It will end next week from Friday on September 15th and then he will be in the district for the following three months until January 1st. Couple, just a few bills, as Glenn mentioned, that park bond, which will bring in money for new parks, rehab parks, and actually has some funding for the Salt and Sea as well. Affordable housing is a really hot topic right now. The Assemblymember had a roundtable and we want to thank Councilmember McKee for attending. It had some really, really good comments that went back to Sacramento. Couple bills that got signed already were the cultural reentry program, which expands access to resources to the reentry population, which certainly helps many communities within the 56th Assembly District. And then also the AB 1453, which is the road to literacy, which allows the governing board of school districts to use the school buses to transport adults to back and forth to school if they're using for scholastic reasons. And that was a problem before and we got that fixed. Assemblymember, right before I got here, said he wanted to congratulate you on your new city hall. He knows that the mayor and your city manager are in there and he's looking forward to seeing it when he gets back into the district. He knows as the mayor, past mayor of Coachella, that it is, city halls are very important for the community and for the services you provide. This Saturday, we'll be actually holding Saturday office hours at our district office in Coachella from 10 to 2. Assemblymember will be there and, as you know, we do office visits up here twice a month during the summer, August, until after Labor Day, we suspend that to give, because a lot of people are out of town, give a little break. But we will be starting those right after the session is in and community members up here will have the opportunity to talk to a representative from our office. And Assemblymember himself will be here to report on the whole legislative bills that were passed and what's looking forward to in the, into the next session in January. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy Shea, followed by Barbara Eastman.
Good evening, City Council, staff and audience. It's good to be a little bit free and 15 pounds lighter from working at the center in 115 degrees temperature, but today, guess what? We got the air conditioning going. So, the whole place, the Veteran Center, has air conditioning. So, we still have to pass the vent test and that should be very soon and then we'll come back for approvals, inspection, et cetera. So, we're just really proud of that. And the West End Mission, whatever, they're gonna be coming next week and they're gonna do the finishing touches, paint, floors, windows, just, I said, I just want it looking like the Marriott. And they just kinda chuckled, but that wouldn't be a bad idea, would it? So, anyway, I'm very happy that, you know, we progressed and things are going along and, you know, it's been a very hot summer. I've not used to being here in the summer. It's been a long time since I didn't go to Chicago, Tennessee, and Florida in the summer, but I survived. You know, there's something really gnawing away and it's, I didn't really pay much attention to it until just recently and it's called, let me read it from here, deferred action for childhood arrival programs. You know, when I heard that 800,000 kids could possibly be affected by this, it's like, huh? What do you mean? If they came here before '07 and they were under 16 years old, they're under this program. And there was estimates of 800,000 that are signed up now and they figure 200,000 more will be signed up before this terminates in a couple of years. I don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, I just was totally appalled to think that all these children that came here illegally, yes, they did, you know, but what are we? You know, 800,000, a million kids are gonna be, you know, they're worried right now today. COD said they won't, won't work, they're not gonna have any problems with it. Annabelle Nevy, I didn't know her story, but, you know, her mother was deported three times and she had to help take care of her three brothers, three times, because her mother was deported three times and she's finally here. And she's all legal and everything. But stories like that really get to me. You know, I have to wonder, you know, when the Irish came over, when all the others came over, you know, did they have to have this thing going on? You know, maybe so, but my grandparents never told me. Huh?
It was called Ellis Island.
Well, they went through Ellis Island. Yeah, I was there. I went to Ellis Island when I went to New York City with my cousin a couple of years ago. And, yeah, they went through there, but I don't know that they were tagged that, hey, you can't come back. I mean, 10 years from now, you can't be a citizen. I don't know. But it's just very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Barbara Eastman, followed by Eddie Johnson.
Mayor, council, staff, and residents of Desert Hot Springs. I am here representing the Vista Montana homeowners. We would like to thank the fire department, we're not here, for an outstanding job of containing a fire to one of our homes last month. They made sure no other homes were damaged. We are all grateful for their quick response and making sure the adjoining homes were safe. This is also why it is so important that the residents of Desert Hot Springs need to vote yes on the two tax initiatives on the November ballot. Our police, fire, and code enforcement are the core of this community. Without them, we would not exist. Our police officers, firemen, and code enforcement are the best. They are underpaid and overworked. You will never get this dedication from a county entity. I hear people say, we have the marijuana, that's, will save us. You cannot count on that, that could be gone tomorrow. You never know what the state and federal government will do. Just like when the state came in and took our redevelopment funds, we nearly lost everything. We all need to get out and vote a big yes on these tax initiatives. We need to start helping our town and stop always depending on others. It is time we all stepped up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eastman. Eddie Johnson, followed by Russ Martin.
Good evening, council members, city, and residents. I want to compliment the city on how great Palm Drive looks with all those palm trees. Those are awesome. You beautified the town and I guess it's gonna continue and, man, that place looks awesome now. And I just want to say thanks for beautifying this town and making it look really good. Thank you.
Thank you. The Honorable Chairman, President of Mission Springs Water District, Russ Martin. Oh, poobah.
Mayor Mattis, council staff. My name is Russ Martin and I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen and Desert Hot Springs resident. I'm here tonight in support of Measure B and C, which will appear on the ballot November 7th. Measure B, also known as the Neighborhood Police Protection and Public Safety Measure, and Measure C, the 911 Gang Drug Crime Prevention Measure, are not new taxes, but are an extension of two existing measures that were passed by an overwhelming majority of voters in 2009, 2010. Failure to pass Measure B and C will result in over a $5 million loss in public safety funding. The effect will mean the loss of funding for nearly one-third of our police officers and 14 civilian positions. In addition, closure of one of our two fire stations. We cannot let that happen. Measure B does not raise taxes. With respect to Measure C, while there is a modest increase in a tax on some vacant lots, homeowners will see a property tax reduction. Homeowners will see a property tax reduction. Let's take a quick look at where we are as a community. According to a recent report published by the Regional Association of Realtors, Desert Hot Springs led the entire Coachella Valley in the percentage of home value increases. In two short years, licenses, our business licenses, are up from 1,483 to 1,527. And the most impressive stat, according to the 2016 FBI report, the crime rate in Desert Hot Springs dropped 18%. That trend continues in 2017. The commercial property on Palm between Playoffs and Glossies is currently in escrow. The new owners have exciting plans for the property. Two Bunch Palms Resort is undergoing expansion and there are ambitious plans for development in the Indian I-10 corridor. All this exciting progress was achieved with the existing tax measures in place. There is no reason to believe that an extension of these taxes will have a negative impact. Realtors I've talked to, a couple of developers in Desert Hot Springs, are strong supporters of Measure B and C. Even the Desert Valley Builders Association, fiscal watchdogs of the building industry in the Coachella Valley, do not oppose Measure B and C. Why is that? A short answer is they know a safer community. It's just good for business. That just makes sense. We're at a crossroads. As Mayor Mattis once said not too long ago, the future is here. Let's not lose the progress we've worked so hard for. That's why I'm supporting Measure B and C, November 7th, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Last public comment tonight is Mike Picardi. Anyone else that would like to fill out a blue sheet and speak on non-items on the agenda or an item that's not on the agenda? This is your second call.
Evening, council, staff, members of Desert Hot Springs. I have a few announcements. I was gonna have a bunch of them, but I'm gonna go off script. Please visit dhsdaily.com. It's a calendar that everyone should know about and if you don't, please visit at dhsdaily.com. You can post your events. There are a lot of events coming up. You can almost eat any night you want to and on the weekends at the VFW. They have so many things going on down there, I don't know where they get the energy. The one thing I am gonna plug before I go off is the bookstore for the Friends of the Desert Hot Springs Library, which reopens again this coming Saturday. We open every Saturday between 10 and 3:00 and all of the profits or proceeds, rather, go to the programs in the library. These are reading programs, they are programs for the kids, there are programs for adults. We have the Jazz Cafe, we have the Meet Your Local Author series that we bring and the money from the bookstore supports this. Okay, hearing that young man, what he did tonight and what's happened and what's going on, that guy could be a DACA person. He could be one of the kids that we're talking about right now with DACA. There's no reason for this to have happened today or ever. They're giving us six months, giving Congress, if you can believe it, six months to quote-unquote "fix" this. I've heard a lot of stuff over the summer, seen a lot of things happening around here since I've been here only four years. I know a lot of you have been here a lot longer. But I am amazed at such a small town having such negativity about itself. It's like it seems that some people here buy into the crap that the rest of the valley lays on us. And I, quite frankly, am sick and tired of it. I see people on Facebook ripping each other apart, tearing the city down, screaming about where the money's going, who have no understanding whatsoever about what you guys go through every single day. I just looked at the binder that he has for this meeting tonight. He was, this gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, was sitting over here. This binder is like this thick. And for people to go on Facebook and rip our staff apart, I'm not campaigning, don't get me wrong, I do not want to run for office. This isn't a campaign speech. Anyway, and to answer Judy's thought about DACA and all that, there's a very derogatory term for Italians called WOP. And I don't know if everybody knows what that means, but when you came over on Ellis Island, it, there was a section called "Without Papers," W-O-P. Most of the people in there were Italian and we were beat upon, as were the Irish, as the Jewish people were and probably still are in places. I just want us to try and be nicer to each other. I think we can all do a better job and I think we all need to. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. This is final call. Anybody would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? I see nobody rising. We will close public comments, we'll go to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There's only one thing that I'd like to bring up tonight. Eddie brought up the medians. Thank you, Eddie, I appreciate that. But one of the intersections, that's Two Bunch Palms and Palm, if you look east, you will see there's significant construction going on, not just the median upgrades and repair. We are widening that section there to ensure that the traffic that's coming down the hill from the neighborhoods up above is not backed up and people running over the sidewalks and things of that nature. So, that'll all be widened and the sidewalks will actually match up as they're supposed to at that intersection. In addition, Two Bunch Palms is gonna be restriped this year as a traffic calming measure as well as Mission Lakes Boulevard. And so, we are hoping that we can continue to move forward. We want to bring the median upgrades all the way up through the center of town and address some of the downtown ballboards and things of that nature as well. So, there's a lot of good things coming and we're excited about it. Thank you.
Any other staff members have any comments? I see nobody raising their hand and jumping up and down. All right, with that, we'll move on to mayor and councilmember comments. I'll let you put your names in. Mr. McKee, you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been off for, what, five weeks?
We've been off for, what, five weeks? Five and a half, six weeks?
Been that long?
It has been a long time. So there have been a lot of things. I'm going to go really fast. First of all, I hope everybody appreciates the last weekend and the fact that you now have a 40-hour week, days off, vacation, and things like hospitalization. Those are all things that were bought by labor in this country when they unionized. I could tell you stories about both sides of my family and what they went through to get these things, but I hope we celebrate them. I think with the things that are going to go on with artificial intelligence and things that are going to go on in the near future, actually, labor unions are going to become more relevant, not less. I had a meeting with Eduardo Garcia on housing, as was discussed. Housing is one of the two major problems that we have in this state right now, and it can't be understated. It precipitates itself into homelessness and people not being able to find or afford a home. It is a massive problem. SB 35, which I brought up earlier, is the bill that's in the Senate right now trying to deal with this problem. The concern I have is pretty simple. The poor communities like Desert Hot Springs don't have the resources or the horsepower to make sure that we get the right thing, which is where the jobs are, where more money is, should have more affordable and low-income housing. It all should not be placed in poor communities. And what's happened over the last 20 years is massive amounts of low-income housing have been built in poor communities. And the reason this is important is when we try and do economic development, the first thing people look at is your median income. Everybody asks why we don't have a target, why we don't have this, why we don't have that. We have the population, we have the car counts, but as soon as someone looks at our median income, they look at it and say, "We're not going to build there." So this is a big deal environmentally, from the standpoint of in the future, we want people to live closer to where they work. 85% of the people in Desert Hot Springs right now work elsewhere. We do not want Desert Hot Springs, Coachella, and to a certain extent, Indio, to become low-income ghettos, and I use that term, sort of hoping not to get there more than we are now. We need the state, the county, and everyone else to work at everyone doing what they should do in this instance, rather than forcing low-income housing into poorer communities. Off my soapbox. We're having a Chinese delegation coming in in October that is going to talk to us about economic development and also sister cities stuff. The staff is already working on this. We learned from the last time they came, and I think we're going to do a much better job this time than we did then. I had a long meeting with Manuel Perez, talking about a lot of the things I just went over, actually. The usual hoteliers meeting. We had a meeting with various people in the marijuana industry, talking about temporary structures and how we're going to deal with the fact that in order to be grandfathered for permits for the state, they have to be operational by the 1st of January. I went and visited with the people at the VFW and talked about the programs they're dealing with. I just want everyone to know that it's probably a good idea to send some comments to various representatives about what's going on with national monuments. We've been sort of told that Sandisnow isn't going to be affected, but, and I'm trying not to be too political here, considering the track record of craziness that exists right now, I would not bet on Sandisnow not being affected in this. As everyone knows, Sandisnow was created by a presidential...
Act.
Act, and it's being looked at, as well as a bunch of others. There are many more that are affected than Sandisnow. I had a conversation with Walt Meyer, who's my appointment on the Public Safety Commission, and the chief, as far as some things that are going on. I just want to make sure that people understand that all of the members of the city council are in a position, that we are totally behind what the chief is doing and what the Public Safety Commission is doing as far as supporting him. I second wholeheartedly the discussions that were made about the two tax measures that are coming up. They are not increases in taxes. We keep hearing that. They are reauthorizations, and they are a third of our budget. Finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about the John Furby Memorial that I think all of us almost went to. It is always touching to remember John and what a delightful person he was and how much he cared about Desert Hot Springs. It amazes me that you could never tell what John thought about you. He was always, he was always so positive, and I know there are times that I said things to him that irritated the heck out of him, but you would never have known that. He was always positive. He was always in a position, they had one thing in mind, and I think that's the thing that everybody up here and everybody in the audience and on television have to keep in mind. We're all here trying to make Desert Hot Springs a better place to live. And if we do that together, as government, as volunteers, as the people that work for the city, we're going to be okay over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to go over all of the things that I did and attended in the period of time that we've been off. On August 8th, we had the Desert Hot Springs Neighborhood Group breakfast at Miracle Springs in the morning, and then in that evening, we had the DHS Diversity Fundraiser at Dylan's and Beer's. And that was a fun event. I think they raised a considerable amount of money that night. On August 7th, I attended the Housing Committee as the city liaison. We discussed a possible redirection of the mission of the committee. There's hopefully going to have a presentation on September 19th from the Desert Valley Buildings Association, the Coachella Valley Housing Trust, on the pilot program that the Housing Committee and these two groups have put together. The goal is to put renters into homeownership through an assistance program. On that same day, I watched the program on CNBC on marijuana in Desert Hot Springs. I thought it was a very, very good presentation on TV, but a little misleading when they said, "We're going to make $50 million," because I think the most we're seeing so far is about $900,000. And maybe five, 10 years, if every one of the cultivators goes to full development in 10 years, we might be doing pretty good. But in the next two, three, four, five years, I don't see a great influx in revenues. August 11th, I attended the Desert Hot Springs Elks Flag Ceremony. We had the Desert Hot Springs Rotary, ROTC, come, and they had a new flag, and now we have a flag that was flown over the Capitol that is now in front of the Elks out there on Pearson. On the 12th, I attended the Rotary Fireside Potluck at Jason L. Saucer's house, beautiful home up on the hill. On August 17th, the Coachella Valley Regional Housing Trust Committee at the Palm Springs Air Museum, and we met also to discuss the presentation that they're going to bring to us. And while I was there, I had the opportunity to see our Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Remember when we had that Tomb of the Unknown Soldier? And it is so displayed there at the air museum with a plaque saying, you know, "Desert Hot Springs." You would be so proud of that. That's wood, and it absolutely looks like marble. They got flags all the way around. They got artificial soldiers standing guard. It's just absolutely gorgeous. So if you happen to be there, it's in one of the hangars. Look it up. It's gorgeous. You'd be very proud. I also attended the John Furby Celebration. A lot of great dissertations, I guess you'd call them, from various people. Steve Schick, his stepson, and I think he will miss him the most of anybody. On the 19th, I attended the Seroptimus House of Hope Board Meeting. And we have a fundraiser once a year in May, and our next fundraiser is going to be at Classic Club, and it's not going to be any more money than it would be here at the Miracle Springs and Desert Hot Springs. On August 22nd, my birthday, I attended the Community Choice Aggregation Committee Meeting at SEVAG, and we're getting closer. We talked at the study session earlier about getting closer to having a plan to go forward for a joint power authority to purchase energy from renewables at a rate less than the Edison and sell to the grid, providing a lower rate to our customers. So hopefully, it'll come to the city council for approval and whether or not we want to join that. But the bottom line is getting our electricity rates lowered. August 24th, I attended LAFCO, which is the Local Area Formation Commission. This commission is responsible for doing land use authority throughout Riverside County. I'm having a wonderful time on that commission, and the two issues that were on there were annexation of a county-community being annexed into Beaumont. Big, big, I mean, it was a controversial-type situation. And the other one was annexation of a recreation district into Marietta, also very controversial. On September 2nd was the third anniversary of the Desert Hot Springs Neighborhood Group, and we all had a wonderful breakfast at Casablanca. And Jeff Bowman was the speaker, and he's also going to be the speaker at our next Soup Supper. He gives a great presentation. He knows the history of Desert Hot Springs. He owns Living Water Spa there on Mountain View, and he's been a commissioner on Planning Commission, Public Safety Commission, and now he's a board director on Mission Springs Water District. So he knows it all. It'd be great. Come to the Soup Supper. Can't remember what date it is, but it's this month, and you'll get a notice. Oh, and then I attended the 40th birthday of Jeff Horton, who is the commander at the VFW, and he had a great birthday celebration. And that concludes my notes. Thank you very much.
Ms. Baller.
I will try to keep mine brief. I attended a microloan meeting. I attended a rat board meeting. I met with Borrego Health regarding the transition of the Boys and Girls Club. I had an interview with a local magazine. I met with Larry over at the Family Resource Center, and then I had a meeting with SEVAG regarding homelessness. Aside from that, I also attended the John Furby Memorial. And as an FYI, I wanted to ensure that people knew that the Community Action Partnership, the CAP program, is part of the county. They have a Savings for Success program where they allow local county residents to participate in workshops pertaining to literacy, budgeting, and saving. And throughout the program, you get to save for something of your choice, like, for example, buying your first home, starting your own business, saving for college. And if you successfully complete the program and attend all the workshops, the county will match your savings 100%. So there is an extension for this program on the deadline, and the deadline is today. So if you are interested in applying, please visit the Community Action Partnership website and sign up for the Savings for Success program. You're still in time. And just as a quick FYI as well, I am now working for Supervisor V. Manuel Perez's office, and I'm very happy to be on board and to help represent his office and always ensuring that I bring up Desert Hot Springs. So it's a great position to be in, and I just wanted to ensure that you all knew. So, thank you.
Mr. Betts.
Yeah, first, congratulations on that position. We're looking forward to good things here in Desert Hot Springs. You've got some extra influence at the county, huh? We've already given her a long list, by the way, so... So, for the first time in a long time, my wife and I took some vacation. My workaholic wife, and actually, we took two weeks off, and we're out of town, which was nice. Still managed to have some calls come in from residents. That seems to never stop. I'm going to pass on a couple of things to the city manager by way of request on a couple of those calls. A couple of people in the landscape, lighting, and maintenance district areas have noticed that when a plant dies, it's not being replaced, or when a tree gets, for some reason, has fallen over, is dead, needs to be removed, it's not being replaced. So if we could maybe take a look at that, they would like the things to stay at the original landscaping plan, and that those type of things we take care of. So if we can get that one done. Todesco Park, had some residents expressing some concern on that recently. I went down there and took a walk through there. It's a really, really dark park at night. And I understand this may need to come back as an agenda item for the council, but there's just a few lights out, but that's not contributing to all of the problem. It's just, there's areas that are just, with no moon, it's just black there, and it just doesn't seem like a very safe, inviting place. There were some other issues going on there, and I want to thank city staff for dealing with those so quickly. I know there are some concerns of the residents, and staff is right there to deal with that one, so thank you very much for that. The left turn lane on Two Bunch Palms Trail, from when you're coming down Two Bunch Palms headed west and you're turning onto Palm Drive, has been bad for I don't know how many years. And somebody over in that seat saw the problem and has fixed it, and I made a point of taking a drive down there, and it is just really nice to see something so obvious fixed and obviously being fixed properly. And you said something, you said sidewalks will match up as they are supposed to. And I'll tell you what, I've waited a long time for somebody like you to come along and notice those things and to get them done, and you're really doing them nicely. I know somebody else mentioned it during public comment, but the palm trees, the beautification, your eye for these smaller details that add up to make our city really beautiful are not lost on, obviously, people in the audience, and certainly aren't lost on me, so thanks. Let's see, we get on to the other boring items. Attending Southern California Association of Governments on Thursday, Transportation Committee, that's where we solve the traffic problems in Los Angeles, and you can see we're doing a really good job on that one. Sunline meeting at the end of the month. Did meet with Desert Healthcare District regarding the homeless houses proposal. I don't think I made much progress with them, but it was a nice, lively, and long meeting, and I did appreciate them taking the time to come out here and hear about the program. Attending the Airport Land Use Committee meeting on, or Commission meeting on Thursday. Met with Assemblyman Manuel Perez regarding some local issues earlier in the week. I want to thank the chief. There were some other concerns regarding some of the shopping centers and getting a little bit more patrols, and I want to thank the chief and his crew for stepping up, and I know I stopped in to talk to the manager at State of Brothers, and he said he wanted to tell you thank you very much. It's noticed, they appreciate it, and some of the things that were nagging problems as you went to our shopping centers are not so nagging anymore, so thank you very much for that. And what else? Measure B, Measure C. We've got a property tax reduction is really what's coming along, and Russ, I want to thank you for your comments, those are very well put. I don't think I could add much to it, just to say that, you know, we're making some progress here, and we sure saw what times looked like around here when we weren't making progress, when things were really bad. We had to cut the police force. I mean, there was 18 months that went by where we were just struggling just to keep up with this police department and everything else, and I sure don't want to go through those times again. I don't think anybody looks at this and see that, you know, we're going to, we can't take a hit of $5 million, a third of our budget, and be able to keep functioning, and the money from some of the other industry that's moving into town. Well, that'll slowly come along, but that's going to add to the progress, but there's no way in the time that we've got to deal with that that's going to replace that. So I think we're looking at, what is it, $103 a year? $103 a year to invest in the police department? That's not a lot. That's $10 a month for police service. And I know I talked to a couple people, I said, "Well, jeez, I just don't know if that's so much else piled on my taxes." And I can understand, they think their property tax is high, but that's not, you know, the situation here, where our police department really needs the support, and let's not take that step backwards. So I just wanted to thank Russ for coming up and saying it so well, and better than I obviously have here, but I just really want to encourage people to take a close look at that, decide if you want to have everything going back to what we were looking at before, and I sure as heck am not interested in that, so... Anyhow, Mr. Mayor, thank you. That's it. We're done. We're back from vacation, and... We're done, we're back from vacation, and it feels good, so away we go.
All right, thank you. My comments will be briefed tonight, as the month, I took some time off also. But I did want to announce all those bad rumors out there that the Boys and Girls Club was closing. It just switched names. The Desert Hot Springs Recreational Club is opening, it's operating. I'm sure today being the first day, being operated by Borrego Health, there might have been a few hiccups, but we're hoping that there wasn't. And we'll be getting a report later, probably in October, on how things are flowing, but I just wanted to make sure all those bad rumors out there were, were squashed. Attended a town hall that was invited to speak at for the VFW. Did that during my time off. Went to a ribbon cutting, Vet Leaf broke ground, one of many that are breaking ground recently. Was asked to speak at the Furby Memorial, which was held at the Desert Hot Springs Health and Wellness Center. It was a great tribute to John, who's been here since the late 60s, and, and really kind of a father of Desert Hot Springs for all he did, and, and he will be missed. Steve Kelly, who used to be a radio host on one of the local channels for, I think, almost 30 years, out in Palm Springs, actually moved over after the radio station was sold to COD, and College of the Desert, and he has a new show, and he interviewed me as the mayor of Desert Hot Springs. It was nice. Transportation at SEVAG did meet last Monday, and of all the items on the agenda, one really does pertain to Desert Hot Springs. As most of you know, we received, out of the $10 million in grant funding, we received a $2 million award, which will enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety up through Palm Drive, and our staff is working with SEVAG on that. But we, during the final vote, we were asked to approve the 10 projects and add 247,500 additional funding to signal synchronization, yeah, I tried to say that, components in Desert Hot Springs projects. So basically, they're going to synchronize all the signals, they're trying to come up with a program to synchronize all the signals in the Coachella Valley to help move traffic faster, and because of the possible lights that we added to Palm Drive for the safety program, Desert Hot Springs awarded another $247,000, so that was nice. Other projects were approved, nothing that really directly pertained to Desert Hot Springs. And then Desert Hot Springs, or, yeah, Desert Hot Springs Pride is having their first Pride Festival here in Desert Hot Springs on November 18th at the Cabbage Museum property. So if you're interested in participating as a vendor or other things, I believe it's on their website. I think they're running out of room if you want to, but if you want to make donations towards that, they're having other fundraisers for it, but it'll be nice to have that in this town. It's putting together a really nice event, they've been working with staff on the permitting, and it should be, should be coming together really well. And that's all I have. So we're going to move on to, I'm going to take this out of order, I forgot to mention this is council, but I did not know if this person was going to show up, but I'm going to jump all the way to the first administrative item agenda. This agenda item will actually take probably less than a minute, but because I know who's going to be appointed, and this person has sat through hours upon hours upon hours of city council meetings, I thought it was only fair that she didn't have to sit through six or seven items here tonight. So I'm going to ask the council to go with me on this. Administrative calendar item number 16, the continued from July 5th, 2017 meeting. This is appointment to the Planning Commission to fill vacancy for unexpired term, and Mr. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when Andrew Cerner resigned from the Planning Commission, that created a vacancy. The appointment was before the council, back on June 6th. No applications were received. Again, on July 5th, no additional applications received. Since then, Jan Pi has expressed to be interested in being appointed to the Planning Commission, and so this matters before you again tonight, and the appointment shall be made by council members, with ratification by the council.
Ms. Zavala.
Jan, I just really want to thank you for taking this on. I know you have so much on your plate. She has a job, she's a working businesswoman, and she's also getting her PhD, and she's been on the city council for many, many years. And I said, please, Jan, will you apply? And she said, I don't know, I have to think about it. And I was like, okay, just please do it. So I'm really happy that, that you're taking this on. I mean, you're obviously a phenomenal leader in our community, and I know you're the perfect person for this, so thank you for taking this on.
And Ms., Ms. Pi is, she's not very good at peer pressure, but she's, would be a wonderful asset. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to speak to this item? All right, with that said, Mr. Betts, you're in the queue.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, what do we do? Ratify, ratify Councilwoman Zavala's appointment of Jan Pi to the Planning Commission. I do want to let Jan know that those meetings do tend to run on long also, but...
Is there a second? There is a second, Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, just have to say something. This is one of my favorite people in the whole city. She put up with my first couple of years on the city council, which was a lot, and, but more than that, gave me a lot of help in a lot of areas as far as being patient, so I appreciate that, Jan. And I don't think people realize how much work she's done and how, how much she's had to do with this city surviving over the last couple of years. She's been on the Finance Committee, she's worked on the city council itself during the bad times that we just went through, and provided a really steadying influence, and I just have so much respect and am so happy that you're going to be doing this. So thank you, Jan.
With that said, I know you're a woman of a lot of words. Is there anything you would like to say?
Sure. Just like the lady says on the commercial, thank you for making this early. Yes.
All right, with that, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Move back to our public hearings tonight. Item number seven is the annexation number 15 to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District number 2010-1, services for APN 665-030-058, located south of 14th Avenue, east of Little Morongo Road, and west of Palm Drive, Bunches Palms Trail LLC. Administration of Services Director, Joseph Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The CFD was set up to prevent shortfalls in the general fund to meet increases demand that's placed on it from the development. This is a CFD that covers lighting, landscaping, maintenance, and repair of public structures. On June 6th, the city council approved a resolution declaring the intention to annex this territory into the Community Facilities District for the purpose of levying special taxes on the parcel. And this parcel is located on 14th Avenue in the industrial area, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I have one in the queue, Mr. Betts.
Yeah, so this essentially means that any of the landscaping associated around this project, the public landscaping, it's going to be built, dedicated to the city, and then it's going to be our job to maintain it, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have nobody else in the queue. Anybody else like to speak? All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time. I will take public testimony. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? I'll close the public comments, or public hearing. The city council discussion of staff. Mr. Betts, you back in the queue? Any other comments? I see none at this time. I'll go to item number eight, I'm sorry. We need to adopt a resolution calling for an election to submit to the qualified electors. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any more discussion? I see none, please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts opposed.
All right, item number eight is hold the election and canvass the election. Mr. City Clerk?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ballot has been returned with a vote of yes.
All right, move on to item number 10 of this, item number seven, which is adopt a resolution declaring election results. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any more discussion? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts opposed.
All right, with that, the item passes. Move on to item number eight. This is the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny conditional use permit number 2017 and the variance number 01-17. A request for the developer of a single-story bed and breakfast establishment and a reduction in the required side yard setbacks on a vacant 7,743 square foot lot in the visitor-serving commercial district, APN 642-143-005. And the applicant is Elon Development. Mr. Tasner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight, as you stated, is a proposed bed and breakfast. Shoot, not reached, Ed?
There we go.
Okay, let me back up a little. Proposed bed and breakfast in the VSC, which is Visitor Serving Commercial Zone, north of Hacienda, on the east side of Anaha Road, shown here, an excerpt, excerpt of our general plan, Land East map. Here, it's the site, the vacant site, to the north, on the top left photo, is a single-family residence, to the south is an apartment building, which is fronting Hacienda. You can see some other site photographs here, and then the bottom left is across the street. July 11th, Planning Commission held a public hearing and essentially voted for, oh, to deny the project based on the following findings. They found that the rooms are too small for the, for the proposed use. The project needs some sort of venue in the backyard, they want a patio cover, and some other features back there for their clients. They also felt that the project needed to access the hot water and provide a hot water pool of some sort. And they were concerned that the project resembles too closely a single-family residence, residence. Here's the site plan, but you can see Anaha on the left side, both side yard setbacks on the north side and on the south side, which up and down on this representation, they're requesting five yard, five, five-foot setbacks instead of 10 feet, which is what is required. You can see floor plan, landscape plan. Here's the proposed front elevation and side elevations of the project. There were some public comments, and I do see there some of the same neighboring residents that may add to this in the public comment section, but they were concerned about the setback. Property owner on the north side said that they had 11 feet to property line. The south side is undetermined, it looks like next to the apartments, it may be a five-foot setback on that side. They were also concerned about the noise, noise that a project might produce in the Recommendation is severalfold. Staff recommends that we take act, take action separately, one on the conditional use permit and one set of actions on the variance. As far as the conditional use permit to operate the B and B, staff either recommends that you overturn the decision of the Planning Commission, which would thereby reverse the decision and approve the bed and breakfast, or you uphold the decision of the Planning Commission thereby denying the proposed bed and breakfast. In addition to that, the request for a variance in the side yard setback, same thing, either overturn the decision thereby approving a reduction in the side yard setbacks, or uphold the decision of the Planning Commission thereby denying the proposed reduction in side yard Some of the findings, and we can come back to that based on discussion, but I have prepared findings for both upholding the decision and overturning the decision for both the conditional use permit and the variance. So we have findings that we can come back to based on council deliberation and discussion. As far as California Sequo compliance, it's considered an infill project. So staff is using that Class 32, Section 15332 as an exemption. Final notes. Staff would like to acknowledge that the applicant has submitted plans since the Planning Commission showing revisions reflecting most of what the Planning Commission requested. However, typically, in an appeal, the planning, of the Planning Commission's decision and any subsequent action, the council has to review the same materials that were presented to the Planning Commission. So that's all staff is presenting. However, the client may wish to present those revisions. That being said, yeah, the client would like to, will likely want to present revised plans, which I do have exhibits for council's consideration. And that's it. The recommendations, that's subject to council deliberation.
All right, I'll entertain questions at this time of, for staff. I think one question I have is, I believe, over 10 years ago, a city council had decided to overlay this area as visitor-serving because of, to protect the hot water and the whales and the spas in that area, correct?
That's my understanding, too. I think it was originally single-family residential, and it was converted to a visitor-serving commercial.
So the point was not to build single-family dwellings, but, so, I'm still confused why the bed and breakfast would be denied. I mean, there's a couple items on there, obviously, obvious, but why they couldn't work through those? If it's supposed to be visitor-serving and, and the company wants to build a bed and breakfast, why wouldn't we? And if you look at the property, to add upon that, how do you assemble the properties around it to build anything bigger? You really can't, it's, it's kind of locked in. So was there any other indication from the Planning Commission of why they would deny a visitor-serving type of business to be built there?
Well, I think one of the findings that I showed, they were concerned that it resembled too closely a single-family residence. I think they may have been concerned that maybe revert it back. Staff has added a condition of approval that any change to the proposed use or an approved use would have to, would be subject to Planning Department review and approval. So they'd be, you know, so they couldn't revert it back to a single family. They also had concerns because it was a pretty bare-bones project, they wanted, you know, something that was more reflective of a bed and breakfast. They do have out there in the street a proposed monument sign that I think they want to put in Anaha Bed and Breakfast. That would be under supper permits. They haven't submitted for that. And also in the backyard. They wanted to have them utilize the hot water that's underneath that site, which that is, I think, 90 degrees or above below that site.
They wanted them to dig a well?
They, they went both ways, and I'll put, the VSC does specifically state that it's to utilize the hot water.
You think it would be the opposite? Wouldn't want to take them to the hot water, but, okay.
That, and, you know, they suggested a patio cover. Staff has also suggested, you know, maybe a little walkway with a park bench and additional landscaping, maybe a fountain, and some other. We do have revised plans, but...
We could see some of the council members' comments here. Yes.
What, you want questions first? I'll comment later. The only question I have is, is this on sewer, for sure?
That I don't know. The applicant, the applicant is indicating yes, and...
I, I just want to make sure, sure that that, that is not an area that allows septic tanks right now. And basically, it can be hooked up to sewer.
I believe it's on sewer right now.
Okay, and there are other things I want to say later, but it's not appropriate right now.
Yes. The size of this lot is really not conducive to a spa of any kind, visitor-serving or otherwise. Did the applicant initially apply to build a single-family home?
They did.
Were they given a, a permit to build and pay a $3,000 fee for that permit?
They did, but the permit was issued in error.
Okay. It was issued in error?
Correct.
So, did you give them back $3,000?
That's why we're in process right now, trying to find a solution.
Don't do it too soon.
Is there any way that this property, even though it's in the VSC, and the size of it, can be used as a single-family home?
The problem is that, that whole block, here, let me back up, is designated a VSC, and...
I mean, the whole, the whole area, all the way from practically from, yeah, it's huge, huge area.
The single lot by itself, we couldn't, because that would be spot zoning. If you, if they got all the neighbors on the entire block, you know, to do it, initiate a change of zone, or if that was something council did as part of the... a change of zone, or if that was something council did as part of the comprehensive 2018 general plan update, then that is possibly to revert that back to single-family, but...
Well, to me, any, any lots that's 7,000 square foot or less should be reverted to single-family home, because it really is not conducive for anything else. That's a small lot.
Can I say something else now that you brought that up?
Yes, go ahead.
The problem I have is I've talked to both the hoteliers and the individual hotel owner that is on the bottom of that street. And what they recognize, we've had discussions about this, because the Hoteliers Association was the organization that put forward the visitor-serving area. They understand that things have been built in those areas, in some cases illegally, because there were times that the city staff allowed building permits in visitor-serving areas where they shouldn't have been. Here you have a circumstance where on one side there's a house and the other side there's a multifamily. Their point is, in the visitor-serving area, they want to make sure the lots that are contiguous, that have the possibility of being things that can become restaurants, or day spas, or hotels, or things like that, can exist. They agree, and I've asked this question both in the meetings with them and with the individual owner, that this should be an exception, because otherwise, this is going to just remain a dirt lot. There is no way that we should be forcing a bed and breakfast in there, because I agree with the property owners that they don't want people moving in and out of there all the time and having parties in the backyard. That was the whole purpose of the visitor center. I have two spas that are within a block of me, and although we support them and love them, on certain nights when people want to party, you're in a position, you have people playing loud music until 2:00 in the morning. Now, that was the reason they put visitor-serving areas in place, was to separate those sorts of things that are incompatible uses. You don't want that sort of thing next to a single-family residence. In this case, you have two buildings that are a single-family resident and an apartment building. So it makes sense to me, and I've been told by the lawyer, our lawyer, that we can't do this, I assume that we could put a variance in and say we would allow a single-family home, as Ms. Parks has suggested, because I think that that makes more sense there. But anyway.
Mr. Mayor, members of council...
Before you start, Gerald, can you put the record screen back up? We want to look at a report. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think many years ago, the intention was to have the entire visitor-centered kind of area without any single-family homes. Obviously, there are properties that the city council may wish to rezone. City council can definitely rezone pursuant to an ordinance. However, that cannot be done as a variance. However, what you have before you tonight is somebody who originally wanted to have the item, I think, as a single-family, but was told not to, obviously, because you can't have that in the zone, so he's trying to comply with the zoning laws. And Planning Commission heard it, denied it, and now it's being appealed. So I think that the hearing before you tonight is not, obviously, whether or not we should rezone or not zone, or whether, that kind of, that kind of discussion, but whether or not the city council will uphold the Planning Commission decision or deny the Planning Commission decision based upon the current laws that are, that are in effect.
All right.
That said, eventually, something like this, the city council may wish to reevaluate sooner rather than later.
Ms. Val.
I agree. I think it does make more sense as a single-family home. When I saw it, I thought it was a little strange, because it is such a small lot. But in essence, right now, there's nothing that we could do to change the ordinance for this one lot, because it would be spot zoning.
No, not necessarily. The reason why we can't do it tonight is, is because we would need to do a zone change, which would require a hearing before the Planning Commission and a hearing then before the city council, and then it would take effect, obviously, 30 days after the second reading. So if that's something that the council would like to do, we could definitely do that. It would take, I would say, 60 to 90 days or something like that to do a zone change. But if we were to do that, we would, the applicant currently has a right to be heard tonight. He's been noticed, he's here, et cetera. If he would like to kind of suspend the appeal in order for council to redo the zoning, that's something that the city council, should they wish to do that, can do, but we would actually, I would need an okay from the applicant because it's...
Let's get through the discussion first, and then we'll see if we go to that direction. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I don't want to delay this any longer. I think the applicant's been waiting a long time to get this approved. I think the zone change for the visitor-serving zone shouldn't be taken on an individual basis to just get the whole thing straightened out and fixed. Perhaps when we pass that ordinance, if we do, make a retroactive to any properties that haven't finished construction yet or something, maybe he can make it a retroactive to this one and deal with that one later. But I think in the interest of somebody who wants to build and get something going on their property, go ahead and move this through as it's been proposed, overturning the Planning Commission decision, and then go ahead and clean up this problem in the visitor-serving zone, because you have people who are effectively denied the use of their property unless they do something like this, which I think everybody agrees seems to be a stretch. You're basically putting in bed and breakfast, but it's really a house. And so, and I think ultimately, you're going to end up with a worse situation than what the visitor-serving zone intended to create by putting in something that looks like a bed and breakfast in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I'm in favor of approving this, or what is it, overturning the appeal?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this is a hearing. We have several members of the audience wishing to speak. So let's first hear the testimony, and then we could bring it back after the close of the hearing.
Okay. So let me just, so the question is, can we bring this back as a zone change and have it applied to anything that's in that zone, can revert back to a different zone?
You're talking about lots that are designed for single-family homes, could put a square footage number on those lots. Let me just make sure that I'm understanding what you're asking, and that are not contiguous to another property.
Yeah.
So the only use for that would be a single-family resident.
Right. And anything that would happen to get approved, say, you know, in the next, now, between now and the next 60 days, could be revert back to the changed zoning.
Yes, we can do that.
Good. That sounds good.
Not that we're getting off track here. We're going to keep moving. Open the public hearing at this time and take testimony from the applicant. Mr. Applicant, would you please come forth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Chris Foye. I work with Elian Development, and we are the applicants.
Go ahead and hand it to the city clerk.
I mean, when we applied for this project, I mean, I've been building in this city for almost 15 years, and I've assembled a lot of investors to invest in Desert House Springs, and we have substantially built over 120 homes. We care about this city. So when we initially applied for this, we did all the necessary due diligence and obtained the permits in March. And met with a neighbor, got along, because we normally do that to make sure that we're in compliance and work well with our neighbors. And upon starting grading, we got a, I got a call from the development director that we should stop construction. So I immediately proceeded to the city to ask why, and we were told that the zoning was not what it was, even though we got a letter which says definitely what it was. So I said, okay, fine, we have invested a lot of money into this project. What can we do to make sure that we're complying with the zoning? And they told us what to do, so we redesigned the plan to make sure that we're compliant. So I understand, so when we started the project, it makes sense, it's a single-family home, but we have to comply, and we have already invested a lot of resources into the project. And, I mean, this is, I mean, you cannot, a city cannot have laws and zoning, and investors, when they look at it and do their investments based on that, to be told contrary to what the city gave out, what is not. So basically, it was very confusing, and investors weren't quite happy, so I proceeded to do whatever needed to be done, because we cannot ask for our money back. We've paid a lot of money to Water District, to the city, to a bunch of the architects, all the project participants who made this possible. So we were at a dilemma, and we hadn't done anything wrong. So that's why we've been working to make this, to make it right by the city, by the neighbors, by everybody, because we care about the city. So that, we eventually, per staff's recommendation, went to the Planning Commission, did everything that they wanted, and they gave a set of conditions, spent another money to revise it, and still at that point, we understood what the ramifications are aware when they denied it, we decided to appeal. So I definitely would like to get this project done. I mean, I'm in favor, I mean, this lot with the way it's zoned and the size of the lot, it's basically impossible for anybody to do anything on the lot. And that's not good for the city's image or for the investors who want to do more projects in the city, but stuff like this would deter them from actually investing more money into the city. So bottom line is, we need to get this project done, hopefully go along with getting the project started and cooperate with staff and the neighbors and the city to hopefully do whatever needs to be done to correct this problem, because as you can see in your package, I mean, it doesn't make sense at all the way this thing was done. Fortunately, had to do with our project to raise the concern. I mean, we've been on this almost seven months now, and by now, we should have built and sold this house. Technically, we're going to lose money on this project, but apparently, sometimes you have sacrificial arms, you know, to take the thing. So hopefully, I mean, the city can, the city council, you guys have the power to correct this, you know, so that we can get this right, and we, and, you know, get the project going and...
Let me get some questions from the council, too. Anybody have questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. McKee.
When you purchased this property, you assumed that it was zoned in a particular way. Did you get the letter from the city before you went through escrow as far as what the, what the possibility from the lot was? You showed me a letter in the meeting that we had had, that the city had given you a letter. When did you get that letter?
That was from the owner, the previous owner of the lot, because since I built in this city, I had prior knowledge of the zoning changes, you know, that, but I also understood there are some lots, you know, that were caught between a rock and a hard place, they could be exempt, and I've run through that before.
Did you have an addition, an earlier design that was just a single-family dwelling already before you had to shift it to be a bed and breakfast?
Well, we had a design that we amended to become a bed and breakfast. By definition, a bed and breakfast, you know, it is really a single-family residence. And, and I mean, but because of the ADA and all that, we can amend that, you know, through design and architecture and in a meeting in the California Building Code, we can do that to make sure that the handicap, you know, the ADA is taken care of. So we amended a bunch of things to make that happen, and we can still amend whatever needs to be done to bring it back, you know.
Would it be a problem for you if we did rezone it to the point that you could do it as a single-family home?
No, it won't be a problem. We can still, in the building process, we have the ability to make sure that it becomes a single-family home. We can go either way, you know, so that's why letting the project proceed would be the best, I mean, recommendation, because we can, technically, we can do it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Are there questions for the applicant? All right. We'll move on to public testimony at this time. If anybody would like to speak to this item, please come forth, state your name, and you can speak your mind.
Yes, good evening, council members and staff. My name is Richard DeCarlo. I'm a commercial real estate broker, have been one for 30 years. I'm also the owner of the apartment building that's next door to this particular lot. And I just established my credibility. I've been specializing in hotel properties for over 20 years, have sold 50 hotels, several of them here in Desert Otter Springs. We sold the Spring Resort in June of this year. We're closing on the Ambassador on October 1st. We've sold the Sandpiper, the Lido Palms, so many of the different properties within the area. So I feel I'm qualified to speak on what it takes to run a hotel or a bed and breakfast, because I've been involved with this for so long. I received a call out of the blue from Chris, who I'd never met before. I still haven't met him. I've just seen him tonight for the first time. And he called me and told me, you have to move your fence back five feet, because you're encroaching on my property. And I said, what are you talking about? He said, well, we're going to be building a 1,550-plus-square-foot house on that lot, and I, I need that room to be able to build my, my property. And I said, well, I have never seen, even to this day, I've never seen that survey that he said he did. I saw some stakes pounded on my property, which I didn't authorize, but they're there, and they're supposed to be the boundaries that his surveyor made for this particular property. But I had a situation with this apartment building, and I, what I'd like to just tell you what happened to me about eight years ago. I've owned this building for 12 years. Eight years ago, I had it in escrow, and the buyer for that property came to me and said, the lender needs to have a burn-down letter signed by the city. And some people don't know what a burn-down letter is, but if your property burns down, the structure goes beyond 50%, you have to be authorized to rebuild it as a, as an apartment building. And the city turned me down. They said, no, it's zoned for, it's zoned for a spa zone, and if you burn your property down beyond 50%, you have to rebuild it as a hotel. And I said, I sell hotels. I don't want to own hotels. I don't, that's, that's not my business. But they, nonetheless, the city council prevented me from selling my property eight years ago, and now we're in the same kind of a situation with another applicant who is asking for the same thing. Any rate, he did tell me that he was going to build this property and that he had a building permit that had been issued by the city. And I told him, I said, well, you know, it's not zoned for that. It's zoned for, for a spa zone. That's what that zoning is. And I went to the, I went to the planning department, I met with Scott, and told him about this problem, and he was surprised that the permit had been issued. But they did act, and they retracted that, that permit. And they revoked that permit, it's to my understanding. But it seems to me what we have right now is just an apparent attempt to circumvent the zoning on this property by building a bed and breakfast. They couldn't get the house approved for it, because it doesn't allow single-family residents, so you build a, a, a bed and breakfast. Well, I mean, you can't, you can't have a profitable, even a break-even bed and breakfast with two or three rooms. We sold the Yamazaki on Miracle Hill. It had four rooms, and it went bankrupt, because it couldn't make enough money as a bed and breakfast, and we had to sell it as a foreclosure property. So you need to have, it's not going to be working as a, as a bed and breakfast, but I don't think they ever intended to have it work as a bed and breakfast. It's the buyer would buy that property as a bed and breakfast, and he would occupy it as a single-family resident and get around the zoning. And that is what I think it's all about. Plus, the location next to my apartment building, I have to tell you, I've got Section 8 tenant in there, I've got families in there with kids. I've had Paula, who owns the Desert Otter Springs Inn diagonally across the street on Hacienda, she's come to me complaining that my tenants make so much noise that her guests are disturbed, and she is diagonally across the street. Now, my tenants would be five feet from their property, because their patios bunches right up against this property. It would be insane. Nobody would want to stay there a second night if they were living there, because, you know, I can't control my tenants. They have a, they have a right to enjoy music. They, I tell them they should not have any loud music after 10 o'clock at night, but you know how that goes. I tell them they should not have any loud music after 10 o'clock at night, but you know how that goes. So I just feel that what is, what this applicant is trying to do is just get his home built using this city council to approve it for a bed and breakfast. Or even worse, in my estimation, going back and letting him have it and allow it as a single-family residence. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak to this item? Please state your name.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Carone. I owned the brown house on the opposite side of this property. I had to do my homework before I bought my lot. I had to have survey, I had to have lots that were zoned R4 since 1985. I had to have plans approved by everyone. Nobody let me build within the variances of the property. My concern that this young man, he could have done his homework. He, I'm sure they knew what this lot was zoned. I'm sure they knew that this lot was so small that it wasn't buildable. So why let him? Why make me live on top of someone when he's not willing? This home does not fit on this lot. It's, it doesn't fit. And he did come and say, now he's saying he's going to build a 2,000, if I recall, 2,073 square feet? My home is 2,023. If you want to bring up the picture again, we could take a look at it. But I just, it's so uncomfortable. He graded, he's left a pile of rubbish for six months there, he doesn't seem to care. He's dug up my telephone line, my telephone line is now on top of my fence. So he's not been really friendly in the beginning, yeah, because he wanted to put a home there. The lot is pie-shaped. So when we did our survey and he got appeared during the planning commission and said, well, she just doesn't, sorry, she just doesn't want this next to her house. He's right, I don't want this next to my house. I have a beautiful 2,023-square-foot home. I obeyed all the rules, I built that home in my 20s. Even when the mayor, that had the property behind us, which is now the rehabilitation, said, your air conditioning is blocking my view. I said, excuse me, sir, my whole house is blocking your view. But yet alone, I had to take my air conditioning down and place it on the side because I had to obey by the rules. I've seen the city go, what you guys said earlier about the struggle, and I've seen it. I've been here since 1978. So I've seen it struggle, I've seen it go through all of it. I just ask you, please don't let these people keep coming in and building these things that don't do anything for us. It doesn't do anything, it doesn't do, we have a beautiful street, we have beautiful neighborhood. I mean, he isn't going to do anything. It's just, don't let somebody come in and break the rules because he didn't do his homework before. I never got away or got this far by not doing my homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? This is the opportunity for the applicant to rebut any of the testimony that was given today. Mr. Application, applicant, would you like to come up, Chris, and speak to those items that were mentioned?
Thank you. I would say Mr. DeCarlo essentially made a case for us, I mean, by what he's saying, the complexity of, because right now, if his property burns down more than 50%, he has to actually rebuild it as a, you know, hotel. He cannot rebuild an apartment complex, you know, that's point and simple. Even since this ordinance of zoning was changed, I mean, I was, I learned from staff, they had a 15-year grace period to revert all the single-family homes into visitor-serving areas. So actually, the city has the right to go after the homeowners right now that live in that area and force them to actually build a bed and breakfast or a hotel. So I think he made a case, you know, for us, why the city council should fix this problem once and for all by letting us continue and then pass something that would retractively, which we can change to conform so that this thing will not happen again. And Cynthia, she also, in a way, this lot, we didn't create this lot. I'm a developer, we create lots. I did a subdivision behind the new county building on Bonavista and Choa. Minimum lot size over there was 9,000 square feet. So I know how to create lots. These lots were created back in the 60s or 50s or 70s, I don't know. All those lots are substandard. So we, we cannot let this lot vacant. If this lot is vacant, it doesn't bring any revenue to the city. It just creates people to dump trash on the lot, on the properties, and then code enforcement will go and issue citations. So basically, by this lot remaining vacant, it doesn't bring any revenue to the city. I mean, the city needs money to operate. By us building, we bring money into the city that goes to fund the police, maintaining the streets and doing a lot of programs for after-school for kids. So basically, both of them are actually making the same case we're making. I mean, essentially, she just, you heard her, that she doesn't want somebody to build. That suggests that she should have bought the lot, she had the opportunity to buy the lot. I mean, if you don't want it built, I mean, this is still America, I mean, we have rights. I mean, we bought the property, we did our due diligence, as you guys have in front of you. I mean, we can only go by what the city gave us. I mean, if you let it, comes from the city saying that you can build something, I mean, why should any investor or any lender go against it? I mean, we show the same due diligence to our lenders who took their risk to lend us money and the investors to lend us money to build this project. I mean, they are not ignorant, I mean, this are savvy business individuals. So I think essentially, both of them are here in another way, making the case why this project should go ahead. I mean, you cannot just admit that you don't want a property built. I mean, you have yours, you built yours. I mean, your next-door neighbor could have also said that they don't want it built. I mean, this is the same problem they're having in Northern California right now, which they can't build any houses. I mean, the city and the state has affordable housing problem. I mean, we are courageous enough to come to this city to build affordable housing knowing full well, I mean, there's other cities, Cathedral City Palm, Springs Palm Desert, where, I mean, it's more lucrative. I mean, people don't want to build in Desert Hot Springs. I have three friends who are developers who are actually getting away. But we are taking the, I mean, I built, I mean, I care about this city. I live in Los Angeles, and I come here and I bring investors from Los Angeles to promote Desert Hot Springs to build it. I mean, that takes a lot of courage. So it doesn't make sense, you know, for this lot to be vacant. It doesn't benefit anybody, it just benefits pretty much trash and people who want to, like, make the city not look beautiful. So, I mean, I think, in conclusion, I believe both of them made a case for us. And you guys, the city council and the mayor, you are responsible to fix a problem which the city has and to generate revenue for the city. And we can design the lots to meet the setback requirements, which we have done, to make sure that the project meets all the basic development standards and the building and safety codes of the California Building Code. And also provide affordable housing, which this thing will be priced in. I mean, unfortunately for us, we're not going to make any money on this project because we had the permit for almost seven months. So I guess I rest my case.
Yes, I appreciate your time. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll get into city council discussion. I'll start with a few comments, and then I'll go on to Mr. Betts. It's kind of outweighing it. Both of you made some great comments for your personal reasons, obviously. The one correction I do need to make is that if a home or a bed and breakfast was built on there, there is tax revenue and TOT revenue that would be, you know, available to the city Desert Hot Springs. So keeping it as an empty lot only produces so much taxes, which isn't a lot. So there is benefits to allowing something to be built on a lot. If we don't approve it as a bed and breakfast or a house, eventually, somebody will, they'll probably sell the lot or try to sell it, and eventually, someone behind there could put lots together and build a very large structure behind you. So you gotta outweigh what's, what do you really want to see in the future? With the housing boom coming back and economic development being done at Desert Hot Springs, you know, what is the proper thing to do today? The way it sounds is that you want to build a house. So that with that to happen, we have to go through the process that's been talked about today. So it would be delayed at that point. So a decision tonight can only be made on either approving the decision that the planning commission made or denying, or upholding the denial of, I'm sorry, overturning the decision and approving, or upholding the decision and denying, both on the conditional use permits and the variance. So it's kind of a tough decision to make, I hear both sides of it. And we have to outweigh that, and I'll wait to hear from the rest of the council. Mr. Betts?
So what's in front of us, and existing is an ordinance. It says this gentleman, if his property burns down, he has to build it as a hotel, not as a apartment. And that if you've got a lot, you've got to make it a bed and breakfast, you can't make it a house. And obviously, quite obviously, a problem with the visitor servings, which has been a problem for a long time. And I'm happy to hear that it looks like we may have some, a council that's agreeable to looking at fixing some of these problems that have been created. That's very encouraging, this has been going on for a long time. But if the ordinance says a bed and breakfast must be built, and staff is saying that this now meets the requirements of a bed and breakfast, I'm trying to figure out how the heck is we deny somebody to do a bed and breakfast? That's what he's come here and implied, he's met the requirements of this ordinance. So I, you know, I wasn't quite clear on what the argument was regarding the vacant lot. I didn't grasp what the problem was there. Would you rather have had a house, or would you rather have had a bed and breakfast, or just nothing? I wasn't clear on that, so I don't, you know, and I have to say that the discussion on the apartment almost sounded like, you know, you're explaining to us just how bad this ordinance has been in your case. And I think he's, as you said, you guys have the same, same issue. Thank you. I'm getting all the millennials, you know. Anyhow, so as long as staff says that this can, meets the requirements of a bed and breakfast, and he's gone through all the hoops and done what he needs to do to comply with the ordinance, I don't see as if we have any other choice.
Ms. Parks?
Well, I was, I was just questioning some of these sections of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 17.08, Section 17.12-230. All of these sections that are put into the letter that went to him, telling him that he could build a single-family home on the property, how could they misinterpret these sections of the ordinance?
I can't answer that.
They weren't staff at the time?
You know, there's a table that we go through, that breaks down each use and says, you know, is it by right of zone, is it a development permit, is it a conditional use permit, or is it prohibited?
That was when we did the visitors.
I know, but he wasn't a staff at the time.
Okay, well, I was on the council at the time we did the visitor-serving overlay. And it seems to me that we took into consideration at that time any lots that were non-contiguous, that were under, around, under 9,000 square foot or around 7,000 square foot, that those were, like, exempt from the visitor serving. Non-contiguous, small lots within that. And that's basically what this letter says.
Is that in the ordinance?
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm asking. Do you have a copy of the ordinance and these sections that you can refer to?
Do we?
We did refer to them.
I'm not aware of a section that allows that exemption, that is something. Yeah, of course, but.
Ms. Parks, can you go ahead and just tell me the section again, please?
Well, it was that, basically, it referred to 17.08.
Okay, let me look. When staff and I had gone over the code sections, if I recall correctly, there was no, yeah, 17.08 just pretty much talks about residential districts.
I think if you go to 220, I think it starts talking about VSC and the hot water and some of the other development requirements.
17.08 specifically talks about residential districts, so that obviously would not be.
A non-conforming use thing at 17, 124, 040. Mr. McKee, do you have a question or a comment while they're looking?
A little bit of both. I want to stress that the hoteliers themselves were the ones that created these zones. And they were reacting. Well, I'm saying they were the ones that were.
Encouraged it.
They encouraged it. And they still encourage it. There is a very aggressive stance toward these areas by the people that own hotels and spas. That's the reason I talked to them and said, okay, this is a specific instance. And I talked to Paula, too. Paula is a friend, actually. And I said, okay, what's the problem? And she specifically said that from her perspective, that wouldn't be a problem to put that in there because she's already dealing with a multifamily and a house that's there already. So the problem I have is this, I understand what went on. The city went through numbers of periods when either they wanted growth or they didn't want growth. There were periods when the county allowed people to build on lots that they shouldn't have let them build on, that couldn't even perk. There were circumstances where we, if we had brains, we would never allow any houses or multifamily houses in these areas. We would have made them parks and spa areas, and all of this wouldn't be here. But what we're dealing with now is the hodgepodge that has occurred. And I applaud the fact that the hoteliers themselves, the impetus for this, are saying it doesn't make any sense for us to seize this person's property. Because in effect, that's what we're doing. One of the most difficult things we do as a city council is dealing with zoning because we are in effect setting the amount of money a person gets for the property they have or telling them they can or can't do anything. And in this case, what is being suggested by the neighbors is that we just make that lot worthless. You can't do anything with it. Now, I just don't think that's fair, especially considering they did do some due diligence. They were in a position that they checked to see what was going on. They got a dang building permit. I mean, what are we doing here? You know, I, the street I live on, I wish that there were no people next to me, too. I mean, I have a multifamily that lives right next to me that is continuously an irritation as far as being noisy. I have spas that play music until 2:00 in the morning. That's part of what being a neighbor is, I'm afraid, when it comes down to it. I think there's everybody in this city that would like space in between them and neighbors. Unfortunately, it's been zoned in a particular way, the lots have been created in a certain way, and there are lots in town that are smaller than this. We've got lots of 50-foot-wide lots all over the place. I don't like the fact that it's been forced into being a bed and breakfast, and I would like the lot to have a house that more conforms to the shape because there are designs that are made up for lots like this. But that's just me when it comes down to it. I think what I wish would have happened didn't happen. We have to deal with a problem that we have done things, almost like Band-Aids, to try and fix an initial problem, and now we've created another one where we, in effect, have made some people's property worthless if we don't have some flexibility. And I don't think that's our task. I don't think the people that are coming forward and then saying you shouldn't build on this would think it was fair if we made their properties worthless.
Ms. Rahi?
Were you finished? I didn't want to interrupt. Okay. Well, I'm hearing a few things, but number one, 17, 124.040 just has to do with non-conforming uses. And so it pretty much states exactly what the applicant stated, that the non-conforming use of a conforming structure within any residential land use district is 15 years. When we had a chance to look at the code sections, I can't say why a certain building permit was issued. It was done in error. As I reviewed it, I, both staff and I came to the conclusion that a bed and breakfast is allowed with the CUP in that area and single-family zone, single-family residents, they're not allowed in that zone. But from what I'm hearing, if I may, is it sounds like the city council wants to overturn the planning commission's decision, this is what I'm gathering so far, on both the CUP and the variance, based upon the findings of staff on this specific application. And then possibly direct staff and myself to look at the, to look at that zone and possibly come up with some wording to try to avoid things like this in the future, whereby we could carve out some instances in the VSC zone whereby we can allow single-family residences in that area.
And what I would suggest is that be forwarded to me earlier so I can take it to the Hoteliers Association to, and let them look at it so they have their issues.
We could bring it back even as a study session item or something like that, whatever the council deems appropriate, but that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Ms. Savala?
I think Ms., I think Parks was the first.
I think she's out. You're done, right?
Yeah, definitely, and I think what we were also asking for was to. Yeah, for, definitely, and I think what we were also asking for was to see if there's a way to make that retroactive, so that if he does say, for instance, if he wants to revert it back to a single-family residence, that he's able to do that, so he's not forcing the bed and breakfast just to fit into the existing zoning.
Yeah, if the city council eventually approves that zone change, we can definitely talk with the applicant to see kind of where he is in the process, to see if he wants to revert it back to a single-family, or if, depending on what the action is tonight, or move forward with a bed and breakfast.
What I would, what I'd ask, too, is the person that has the multifamily to be in a position to look at that also, to allow him to not be in a position he has to basically tear it down and put up a spa. It, it appears to me that he built it a couple of years before visitor-serving even existed, it sounds like. And, and to be caught in a situation that he's not grandfathered in, as far as that, is not fair either.
Understood. And, and how it reads is the non-conforming use of a conforming structure within any residential land use district. My understanding, actually, in, in looking at it a little better, it's not residential land use district, it's, it's commercial land use district, so we might-
It's commercial, which I think they have a ten-year window to him on.
So I think that he's, he's probably protected.
And one last.
So he was told, let me, let me get clear on this. He was told something that was untrue, then, is what you're saying, as far as the rebuilding?
I don't know, I, uh, with respect to the, the multifamily owner, I don't know what he was told. I don't know what he was told.
By whom?
And by whom. I, I'm sorry, I'm-
At this point, it doesn't matter what past staff said. We just got to move forward with the decision. Ms. Savala has one more question?
Uh, more of a comment. We totally understand your concerns in terms of, you know, having something being built next to you. It's, you have to understand our position here, already bought the property, has the permits. We can't really say, well, your neighbor doesn't want you to build, so you can't, like, we, we can't, we can't do that. However, at this point, if, if you're okay with it, I can just make a motion.
Questions? Yes.
Have we, have we got all the facts?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, I've gone through all that. I can now take a motion.
Uh, so, motion to overturn the decision of the planning commission for the conditional use permit, thereby approving conditional use permit number twenty dash seventeen for the development of a bed and breakfast facility at one-two-nine-hundred Anisia Street. And, wait, do you want us to vote on it separately, or can I include it all in the motion?
I would like to, because I'd like to see if we can talk him into maybe building a, a, a structure that's a little different, as far as the, the setbacks are concerned.
Oh, I was gonna include staff-
That could screw you up badly.
I was gonna include staff recommendation for the setbacks.
Okay.
So go ahead and include the variance with your, with your extra.
And, as far as the variance, overturning the decision of the planning commission, thereby approving the request for a variance for the proposed bed and breakfast at one-two-nine-zero-zero Anisia Street, with staff recommendations that were set out for the setbacks.
Okay, so to the north side of the property, staff recommended a ten feet to eight feet reduction, a twenty percent reduction, and on the south side, recommended ten feet down to six feet.
Can we add a, oh, let me see if I can get a second first. Is there a second? All I want to do is add a little friendly amendment to that, is that staff is going to be looking into possible residential home that still states that it'll be a bed and breakfast. But if in future we can reconfigure things with a residential home that'll be more appeasing to the neighborhood, that work?
Yep. I'll include that into the motion.
Can that be done?
Further staff review.
Yeah, Thomas.
So with further staff review, based on upcoming ordinance.
With, with respect to, what, what I would suggest is to just vote on the appeal, and then direct staff afterward, just to see if we could go ahead and amend the ordinance. We'll work as quickly as we can on that.
All right.
And also look into the non-conforming use section, because there's different gears based upon residences, commercial structures, et cetera.
Okay, so as the original motion. I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Please, please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes unanimously.
And then you guys got the direction on how to move forth. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. On, I, we'll be moving to item number nine, then we'll be taking a break after item number nine. Our, item number nine is conditional use permit number twenty-eight dash sixteen, development agreement nineteen dash sixteen for the development of an indoor marijuana cultivation facility with a total foot, floor area of sixteen thousand two hundred eighty-eight square feet on a one-point-two-six gross acre site located on the north side of Palomar Lane, approximately four hundred feet east of Little Morongo Road in a light industrial zone. The applicant is Palomar D H S L O C, liar, stolen, and Mr. Tajner or Mr. Porus?
I've got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These should move quite a bit faster. This is a proposed cultivation project. Come on. There we go. Looking on the north side of Palomar, east of Little Morongo, west of Cabot. They're going to be taking access off Palomar Road on the south side of the project. Here you see the circulation pattern, the parking. Also highlighted in the red rectangle is the area for temporary parking of semi-trucks, should it revert back to a underlying industrial use.
Get your semi-trucks.
Here's, uh, the first floor, floor plan, showing the headhouse and the cultivation area. Also shows on the left side the proposed shipping loading area. Uh, the fiscal impact to the city. Total, total, the project will yield one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-four-hundred-fifty annually. The facility is proposing or projecting to employ eight full-time employees. Project is proposing to do it in a single phase, however, there may be some issues down the road as far as infrastructure improvements that, you know, staff will have to take into consideration if all sudden phasing is, is addressed in that. And if it's substantial changes, changing the overall, uh, project, then we might bring it back to planning mission. Likely, we just handle it at staff level. Environmental analysis, they are in compliance with CEQA, and have prepared a drop mitigated negative declaration. No comment, public comment period has closed, and no comments have been received as of this afternoon, September fifth, twenty seventeen. Recommendation is that they, the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration for Palomar D H S cultivation facility. Two, approve conditional use permit number twenty-eight sixteen. Three, approve development agreement nineteen sixteen for the construction of a sixteen-thousand-plus-square-foot single-story cultivation building on a one-point-two-acre vacant parcel on the north side of Palomar, east of Little Morongo, A P N six-six-five-zero-four-zero-zero-one-five. Staff is available if you have any questions, and we do have a representative here in the audience on behalf of the applicant.
All right, we'll have entertaining questions from the council first. See if we'd like to speak to this item. Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple of things I'd like to say about this. Some of them are discussions with five items that we're going to be getting going here. The, the first one, though, resides for, for specifically item nine. On item nine, page two thirty-three, there is a drawing that shows a truck unloading area. And what I, what I said in some notes that I sent the staff already, we allowed loading areas like this initially, because we didn't want to hold up projects that were already close to being completed. We were, I think, being nice people. This takes that to an extreme. It not only, it's not enough space that a truck can really back up into that roll-up door area, but it blocks some of the parking while you have a truck in that loading area. So from my standpoint, and this is just sort of an all-encompassing statement, we have to get this under control. I don't want just someone to mark a space out on some asphalt and say, a truck can unload here. I, I understand from the developer's standpoint that they think they're going to be successful, but part of our charge, when we're dealing with properties like this, is for future use. If you look at all the documents we have, and the CUPs, then the developmental agreements and everything else, it talks about future use. So, we need to do a better job with this in the future. I'm not in a position, I'm going to rant and rave and not approve this project because of this, but please, understand where we're coming from. If we're going to be reasonable about future use issues, we have to do a better job in the projects that come forward. The, the second thing, and the only thing I'm going to talk about, and this is for all of the projects we have today, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, they're all in the flood zone. Theoretically, the FEMA one-hundred-year flood zone. This concerns me, considering what's been happening in places like Houston, where they've had three five-hundred-year floods in the last seven or eight years. We had a lot of rain this year that was different than normal, and it's really possible that we're going to see different kinds of rain patterns than we have in the past. I'm a little concerned that we're not sort of taking that to heart, to say that, oh, this is in a FEMA flood zone, and we only expect the water to be a foot high at, what, what, five feet per minute, something like that, a fairly low rate, rate of speed, too. I, I think that that's being a little crazy. I don't want to be in a position that all of these very expensive infrastructure improvements that we're putting in place are not taking into account that there could be a little different situation as far as flooding is concerned there. And I, I just want the staff to think about that a little bit in the future, to see if there's something we can do to make it more flood-resistant. Thank you.
Ms. Bitts?
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember McKee, when are you going to say no, based on the lack of truck parking? I, I'm just, I'm not trying to be cute, I'm-
I, I know.
I'm, I'm saying that is that I've heard you say this numerous times, and my understanding is that staff, the applicants come forward to staff, and staff works this out, and so my question is, are you totally ignoring us? Are they refusing? Did they refuse to put in any truck parking, or what happened on this one?
Since you asked me a question, I should bring up something else, actually. Part of the problem revolves around small lots.
Okay.
If you look at these things, they're very difficult.
I just wanted to find out why this one, I want to ask you a question a little more detailed. Why doesn't this have better truck parking, since we've been asking for it over and over and over again?
It's actually just one of the older projects that we've had in the pipeline, and we've had, had a little bit of difficulty trying to change some of the site plan designs. They had provided some access for complete turnaround on the backside, just that side was a little bit minimized to, I think, thirty feet radius instead of thirty-four feet radius. We do feel like the smaller box-sized trucks still fit, just not the larger, larger ones would not be able to completely turn around.
So the next guy that comes in, though-
Yes, all new ones do have full-
You're gonna say, you know what, this one isn't working. We need some, right?
No, actually, we have full on, on, full semis now that actually do use a template.
We don't need to belabor the point, but I just wanted to say that at some point in time, we've-
Yes.
-got to get this issue addressed, and it really should have been on this one. Uh, the next thing is, do we have an engineer's estimate on the public improvements that are directly tied to this project?
Not at this moment, unless the engineer of the applicant does.
Okay, but there are public improvements tied to this project, right?
Yes, yeah.
And what are the bonding requirements there? Set cash deposit or produce a bond? What do we have to guarantee those public improvements?
It's per ordinance, and it's a condition of approval, and engineering conditions.
Okay, we don't see that here in the development agreement, but you're taking care of that afterwards?
Conditions of approval, yeah. So in the engineering department, you have, um-
Does it say that in the language here of what we're voting on?
On the language of the-
What we're, what the council here is looking at and voting on?
Yes, yes, it's part of your package. It's on page two oh four, the engineering department conditions start, conditions of approval fifty-two and on. And this actually explains the frontage of the property, all the street improvements that are required of front, frontage of the property, actually, it's condition number seventy, I'm sorry. Palomar Lane, north, north side of center line to ultimate right-of-way, thirty feet of the sixty-foot right-of-way. Street improvements include construction, asphalt, concrete, pavement, curb, gutter, et cetera. There's also full street improvements across the frontage, and a twenty-four-foot paved axis all the way to Little Morongo.
Okay, so they'll have to either produce a bond, or put a cash deposit an equal amount to those public improvements before they go forward, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McKee, are you back in?
Yes, I'm really sorry, I'm old and forgetful. The other thing I wanted to deal with, with all of these projects that are on smaller lots, we've had this discussion before. There is no way that I can see that you could put a building on these smaller lots that covers seventy-five percent of the lot. There is no way. All of the ones we see today are in the thirty to thirty-nine percent range, somewhere around in there, and with putting the truck access, or, and everything else that's necessary as far as, uh, dealing with water coming off the thing, every, you know, trash cans and everything else, there is no way you could put a bigger building on there. I wish that we would quit saying you could put up to seventy-five percent of the, of the lot as building, when we can't do that. We talked about this before, and I think someone told me that in order to get to the seventy-five percent range, you would have to have like a twenty-acre lot, or something, something like that, a significantly bigger lot. Can we codify that? Can we put something together that's realistic?
Yeah, we're looking into it. That's just a range. There's a minimum and a maximum, that's just a maximum, but yeah, we can definitely look into it.
But, but I, I understand what you're saying, Danny, but theoretically, someone could come in and say, I want to put a, a building that's seventy-five percent of that small lot. Am I incorrect?
No.
Well, they can want to put a building in for that size, but if it doesn't meet all the requirements that-
That's correct.
-the city council has put forward, then it's not going to fit. It just depends on the size of the property. Now, something like Kenny's might be different because of the size of his property. I mean, you get up to that seventy-five percent.
There, there are none of the lots we're looking at today that this isn't true for, as far as I can see.
Right, but it's used as, it's, it's used as what, what the gauge is. That doesn't mean that property itself could ever reach the seventy-five percent.
Then let's get rid of the seventy-five percent figure. Is it, because it's not accurate for most of the properties we get. We can say, we're going to make subjective judgments on how much we're going to allow as far as the building, based on the services.
Make a suggestion, because now we're getting into another agenda item, because we're going to have to set some policies, so let's, today we have to focus on what our policies say today, but I-
That's reasonable.
-think your points were made, and that staff's going to have to-
You don't want me to bludgeon it to death.
I was being nice.
Okay.
Could we also talk real quick, because the flooding issues come up more than one time. Danny, can you talk about the mitigation that we require under these properties?
Sure.
Because they're in the flood protection, or flood prone areas.
Yes, right now, we're following our FEMA flood insurance rate map. It's a firm map. We are obligated to first locate the actual project, either residential, commercial, industrial, doesn't matter where it's at. Based on the location and the map, it actually identifies the depth, the velocity, and it rates it at a certain zoning. Based on that zoning, then the project has to be mitigated in one way or another. We leave it up to the applicant. He may choose to raise that, the actual flood, or the finish pad to an actual level where it doesn't flood. He may flood-proof it. We've seen all kinds of different submittals come through, and we, we've accepted all of them. At the end of the day, they do have to get a FEMA certification for flood insurance.
I, I don't want to bludgeon this either. Scott will throw something at me. But, again, we need to have a policy that makes sense in this area, that we're comfortable that if there is flooding, that, that we won't have the sort of problem we're having in other parts of the country right now. That's my whole point. So, thank you.
All right, got nobody else in the queue. I'm going to open the public hearing and take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant like to speak to this item? State your name.
Hello, my name is Leo Stone. I've been here since the beginning today, listened to the issues the city has, and the issues that you guys have with my application, I believe. I will address those issues with my architect, and see if we can change those to appease everyone here, and make sure that this is not going to be an issue going forward.
We appreciate that. Any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll take public testimony this time. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this item? Second call? Final call? This is your opportunity to rebut all those people that came up and said bad things about your project. As I see done, we'll now close the public hearing, and the city council will discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an opportunity for a motion and/or more comments. Oh, Mr. McKee?
Turned off. I'd like to make a motion to approve a conditional use permit 28-16 and developmental agreement 1916 for development of an indoor marijuana cultivation facility with a total floor area of 16,288 square feet on 1.26 gross acres located on north side of Palomar Lane, approximately 400 feet east of Little Morongo Road in the light industrial area.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the table. There's a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Mr. McKee, are you back in? Mr. McKee, are you back in? All right, please vote. All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, with that said, we still have eight items, All right, with that said, we still have eight items, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. so we're gonna take a five-minute break. That usually turns into seven or eight, but five minutes. That usually turns into seven or eight, but five minutes. All right, we're gonna move on to item number 10. If everybody can find their seats. Item number 10 is a conditional use permit number 01-17 and development agreement 15-17 for the development of an indoor medical cultivation facility with a total floor area of 20,664 square feet on 1.26 gross acres site located on the north side of 15th Avenue, approximately 1,400 feet east of Little Morongo Road in the light industrial zone. And the applicant is D9 Farms, Timothy Santos. I'm assuming, Scott, that's you again.
It is. Can I get the presentation, please? On item number 10. Okay, application by D9 Farms. Small, sort of smaller cultivation project located... Oh, boy, that took me all night. Located on 15th Avenue in between Little Morongo and Cabot Road. Wait a second here. Is this the right?
Pretty close.
D9 Farms, okay. They're taking access on the south side of the project, outlining truck parking.
What's that red square?
That's for temporary truck parking. The, here's a building elevation and a blow-up of our red rectangle showing the truck parking, loading area. Building elevations showing design, architecture, materials, height. First floor plan with the head house on the left side, cultivation throughout the rest of the building. Fiscal impact projected at 200, just under $240,000 annually. They're projecting employing eight full-time employees. The project has, is in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. It's been properly noticed. As of this afternoon, staff has not received any comments, and the public comment period has lapsed. With that, it's a recommendation to approve the, or adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the D9 Farms cultivation facility. Two, approval of conditional use permit 0117. Three, development, approval of development agreement 1517. Four, construction of a 20,664-square-foot cultivation structure and associated site improvements on a 1.2-acre site on the north side of 15th Avenue, east of Little Morongo and west of Cabot Road in the light industrial district. Access or parcel number 665-070004. Staff's available if you have any questions. And I do believe we have a representative on behalf of the applicant here in the audience.
Entertaining questions to staff at this time from council?
Just one question.
Yes.
So, how are they proposing to handle sewer?
Yeah, there currently is no sewer in that area. There is a condition of approval that they are required to submit a report of waste discharge to the regional board, how they're gonna address their sewer, either that be by septic, by holding tank, or water treatment facility. Until there is sewer.
And we're not requiring a full environmental impact report on this one?
They're doing a mitigated negative deck.
Thank you.
My screen is not working. It looks like everybody else's is. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. I will take testimony from the applicant, who is the applicant and/or being represented here today would like to speak. No? Okay, I will take public testimony. Would anybody like to speak on behalf of the public? I see none. I will afford the opportunity for the applicant to rebut. He's not here, so that will not happen. And I will close the public hearing at this time. City council discussion. I'm sorry, I don't have a screen, so I'm gonna need someone from staff to actually try to fix my screen.
I punched in.
Mr. McKee, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for a conditional use permit number 1-17 and developmental agreements 15-17 for development of an indoor marijuana cultivation with a total floor area of 20,664 square feet on 1.26 gross acres located on the north side of 15th Avenue, approximately 1,400 feet east of Little Morongo Road. And I did that in one breath.
Second.
Second.
Is there any more comments? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bets?
Yay.
Councilmember McKee?
Yay.
Councilmembers of all?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Parks?
Aye.
And Mayor Metis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, that says yeah.
Item number 11 is conditional use permit number 05-17, development agreement number 03-17 for the development of a two-story cultivation building totaling approximately 35,320 square feet on 1.26 acre site located on San Gregorio Lane between Little Morongo Road and Cabot in the light industrial zone. Again, Scott.
Thank you again. This is the Desert Springs cultivation project. Located, again, east of Little Morongo, west of Cabot Road. Site is currently vacant, surrounded by light industrial uses. Access will be taken off the north side of the project. Here you can see circulation on the project. They actually did turning radius examples around the south side, backside of the project. And along the east side of the building, you can see temporary parking for semi-trucks. That's also the point where, of access for loading, unloading, and the roll-up doors. We've got some building elevations here. They're at 44 feet. And as I mentioned, the roll-ups are on the east side of the building. Here's the proposed first floor plan. Proposed second floor plan. They're looking at projecting 300, the city's projecting 300, or staff is projecting $380,520 annually for fiscal impact. And the applicant consultant is projecting 20 full-time employees for the project. Applicant is proposing to construction in a single phase as well. They are in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. The draft MND has been noted circulated, made a bill to the public. Comment period has already, 20-day comment period has lapsed. And in addition to that, we, staff has not received any comments as of this afternoon. With that, staff is recommending the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the Desert Springs cultivation facility. Two, approve conditional use permit 0517. Three, approve development agreement number 0317 for the construction of a two-story cultivation building on the south side of San Gregorio Lane, east of Little Morongo, west of Cabot Road in the light industrial district, APN 665-040010. Staff is here if you have any questions. And we do have representatives from MSU in the audience.
So we'll entertain questions at this time of staff. Does anybody have any questions? I see none. My screen is working again. We'll open the public hearing at this time, and we'll take testimony from the applicant.
I'm in the applicant tonight, and I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? You've earned your dollar tonight. Will take any public testimony? Would anybody like to speak to this item? See none? Move on to the opportunity for the applicant to rebut. Nothing to rebut. We'll close the public hearing at this time, and city council discussions. Mr. McKee?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a negative mitigation declaration for Desert Springs cultivation project, the conditional use permit 5-17, and a developmental agreement 3-17 for development of a 35,320-square-foot facility on a vacant 1.26-acre lot located within the light industrial zone.
Is there a second? Any more discussion? See none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 12 is conditional use permit number 09-17 and development agreement 07-17 for the development of an 8,389-square-foot two-story building for medical marijuana cultivation and associated parking and other improvements on a vacant parcel totaling .37 gross acres located on the north side of Palmer Lane, approximately 1,200 feet east of Little Morongo Road and within the general plan light industrial zone. And I'm sure I'm gonna mess this up, but the applicant is Yang Guan? Gwen? And this will be Mr. Tajner Arson.
Yeah, we're calling it the Guan cultivation project. It is located on the north side of Palomar Road, west of Cabot Road, east of Little Morongo Road in the light industrial zoning district. Access will be taken on the south side of Palomar Road. Here you can see the proposed parking, building placement. Here's the truck parking highlighted with a black rectangular. And then on the right side, you can see the loading door. This is actually a south elevation, so if you were standing on Palomar, that actually should be, the roll-up door, I think, is just around the corner and faces the parking area. parking area. Here are the proposed building elevations, and as you can see, that lower left one is the west elevation from the parking lot, and you can see the roll-up door at the south side of the project, of the building. Here are the proposed floor plans. Uh, fiscal impact, uh, we're projecting 124,970 annually, and they are projecting to employ, uh, seven full-time employees. They also are proposing to construct the, uh, project in a single phase. Uh, it is in compliance with, uh, California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, the draft MND has been circulated, uh, and made available. The public comment period ended on July 20th. In addition to that, no comments have been received as of this afternoon, uh, September 5th. With that, staff is recommending adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for the Guang, excuse, uh, if I got that incorrect, Guang cultivation facility. One, uh, two, conditional use permit 0917. Three, development agreement 0717 for the development of, uh, just under 8,400 square foot two-story cultivation building, uh, for cultivation of medical marijuana and other associated, uh, site improvements on a vacant parcel totaling .37 acres located on the north side of Palomar Road, approximately 1,200 feet east of Little Morongo Road, and within the general, uh, light industrial, uh, general plan zoning district. Staff's available if you have any questions?
I'll take questions for staff at this time. I see nobody in the queue. I'll open the public hearing, and we'll take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant here tonight? Or representatives for the applicants?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Paul DeBulatus with MSA Consulting. We thought we'd alternate up here tonight so you didn't have to stare at the same face of the podium all night, so, anyway, appreciate your approval tonight and here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? See none?
Thank you.
We'll take test, public, uh, testimony. Anybody would like to speak to this item? See none? We'll, uh, opportunity for the applicant to rebut. Nothing to rebut. We'll close the public hearing, city council discussion. Mr. McKee?
I'd like to make our motion to approve conditional use permit 09-17 and developmental agreement 7-17 for development of an 8,389 square foot two-story building for medical marijuana cultivation, as well as associated parking and other improvements on a vacant parcel totaling .37 gross acres located on the north side of Palomar Lane, approximately 1,200 feet east of Little Morongo Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any more discussion? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, uh, next item's number 13, conditional use permit number 1117, development agreement 0917 for the development of a 35,435 square foot two-story building for medical marijuana cultivation, associated parking, other improvements on the vacant parcel totaling 1.26 gross acres located on the north side of San Gregorio Lane, approximately 500 feet east of Little Morongo Road, and within the general plan light industrial zone. The applicant's NR Trading, and I'm not even gonna try the name. Um, and Mr. Taschner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Acopian, uh, this is an application by Felix Acopian for the NR Trading cultivation facility. Located on the north side of San Gregorio Lane, east of Little Morongo Road, west of Cabot Road, in the light industrial district. The site is currently vacant, surrounded by other light industrial uses. Uh, access will be taken out the south side off of Palomar Road. You can see, uh, site circulation around the building. And here is, uh, diagram showing the proposed, uh, semi-truck parking, uh, in case it reverts back to an underlying, uh, industrial use. There's also a loading door, uh, shown in the, uh, figure of the building elevation on the right side. Uh, proposed signage will not be part of this, uh, permit. This is just an example, uh, of the building elevation's materials, height, et cetera. Signage will be under a separate permit. Uh, building elevations continue showing the pop-outs, some of the roll-up doors, there's some eyebrows there on the lower, uh, building elevation. Uh, here's the proposed first floor plan with cultivation, and then other, uh, support and ancillary uses. Uh, proposed second, uh, story plan. Uh, the project is estimated to yield approximately $377,720 annually, and they are projecting 13 full-time employees. They're proposing to construct in a single phase. It is in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, the draft MND has been circulated for comments, and the public period, uh, comment has ended. In addition to that, uh, we have still not received any comments, uh, as of this afternoon, September 5th, 2017. Recommendation, uh, from staff is adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for the NR Trading cultivation facility. Two, approval of conditional use permit number 1117. Three, approval of development agreement 0917 for the development of a 35,435 square foot two-story cultivation structure, as well as other site improvements on a 1.2 acre, uh, site located on the north side of San Gregorio, approximately 500 feet east of Little Morongo Road, APN 665-040022. With that, staff's available if you have any questions.
Entertaining questions for staff from council? I see none. We'll open the public hearing at this time, take testimony from the applicant.
Chris Rizuela again with MSA Consulting, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? See none, thank you. Take public, uh, testimony. Anybody in the public like to speak to this item? See none. We'll open, uh, opportunity for rebuttal. No rebuttal needed. We will close the public hearing at this time, and council comments. Mr. McKee?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit number 11-17 and developmental agreement 9-17 for development of a 35,435 square foot two-story building for medical marijuana cultivation and associated parking and other improvements on a vacant parcel totaling 1.26 gross acres located on the north side of San Gregorio Lane, approximately 500 feet east of Little Morongo.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 14 is an urgency ordinance amending chapter 17.180, medical marijuana facilities, operations, and location to eliminate the requirement for developers to enter into development agreement in cer, certain circumstances. And that's Community Development Director Daniel Porres.
I'll go ahead and take it.
Or our city attorney, Jennifer Mizrahi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, you have two very similar items in your agenda packet tonight, number 14 and 15. I'm gonna talk a little bit about why we have both of them on the agenda first. Uh, the first one is an urgency ordinance to amend, uh, chapter 17.180. The, um, the kind of what I'm gonna call backup ordinance is the regular ordinance, um, to amend, uh, the chapter 17.180. I recommend that the city council vote on both of the items, as, as I was quoted before, kind of a belts and suspenders, um, method, and the reason why is because if the council adopts the urgency ordinance, somebody could conceivably challenge the actual findings, uh, made in the urgency ordinance, if that happens, and we, and then we, we, uh, also adopt, if that's, uh, council's desire, a backup ordinance, um, they would only be able to, to challenge, uh, for about, uh, 30 days, which is the difference, uh, between the effect, or about 45 days, which is the difference between the effective date of the urgency ordinance versus the effective date of the non-urgency ordinance. So it's just a lot of, it's very common to see both ordinances coming together in one, uh, council meeting. So the first item is an urgency ordinance, um, amending the, uh, the medical marijuana title of our, or chapter, rather, of our municipal code, um, to eliminate the requirement of development agreements, um, with, uh, for developments of medical marijuana facilities on raw land. Um, we currently had, I'm sorry, we used, we, we had, uh, this as a requirement, because I think, I think it was a requirement, because we weren't really exactly sure where the medical marijuana industry was going, et cetera. We wanted to make sure that we had contracts with the developers. However, um, a development agreement is something that vests the developers with, uh, certain rights. It vests them with the current code section, so if our code sections change, they don't need to follow them. It, it gives them a good advantage, um, and it provides them certainty with the development. That said, generally, in order for the, uh, developers to get that benefit, it's a huge benefit, the city generally will also get a very big benefit. Normally, it comes, it's something like, you know, we get regional storm drains installed, or we get a fire truck, or we get some huge monetary, um, monetary, uh, uh, something, some kind of monetary benefit. We originally had many, many moons ago in the development agreement, um, provision that a developer, it was suggested that developer pay a certain amount of money to enter into a development agreement. That's how big of a benefit it is for a developer. There are two benefits that I pretty much see in the development agreements as we have them now. Number one, we have a certain percentage of local hire. We require that, uh, they, uh, developer, person to the development agreement, um, has a 20% local hire. In addition, local, uh, uh, I don't know if it's specifically spelled out Desert Hot Springs, but basically, they have to hire 20% locally. The other thing that we have as a benefit is, uh, we require the, the marijuana developer to pay $2 above minimum wage. So those are the two benefits that are, that are, um, in the development agreement. With that said, though, development agreements, uh, from a cultivation standpoint and from a, a developer standpoint, uh, could take up to about 120 days or so to process. Um, they are, uh, agreements, they have, uh, in agreements, they have to be adopted by ordinance. It requires a first reading, a second reading, it just adds a significant amount of time to the process. And so, in, in a, uh, in the hopes, I think, of, uh, cutting down and eliminating a lot of the red tape, so to speak, um, this ordinance comes before you, uh, to do that. With respect to the findings that need to be made, they are all in your staff report, they're in the, um, in the ordinance themselves, the findings of urgency, the reason why primarily, I made a few findings of urgency, should the city council wish to adopt them, but one of the main reasons why this is urgent is because we all know about the looming January 1st, uh, state, uh, state deadline. We know that the, also, the cultivators and marijuana developers provide a certain amount of monetary benefit to the city, and if they can't get open before that, um, January 1st deadline, uh, the city may not see those kinds of benefits quickly. So, that January 1st deadline is quickly, quickly approaching, and, uh, rather than having, uh, a regular ordinance, um, you should look at the findings and see if those are, uh, appropriate to adopt the urgency ordinance. Hmm? Okay. The city manager suggests that I go through the findings, so I will do so. They are located on page 1142 of your packet. Um, I could read the entire paragraph, but there are several. Uh, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the paragraph into the record? Okay.
The city manager's shaking his head, and I, he thinks it's important, so we should do that.
We will go ahead and do that. Uh, so, certain findings are, the SB 94 was recently adopted via trailer bill, which, um, among several other things, implements the voter's intent to issue state cannabis licenses beginning January 1, 2018. The city anticipates that the state will be flooded with cannabis license applications. As the city understands, the state has several requirements that must be met prior to issuing, uh, state licenses, which may include the applicant be qualified and possibly operational, uh, by January 1, 2018. The applicants are running against a strict timeline to get their projects qualified and operational by January 1, 2018 deadline. The city acknowledges that the cannabis industry can have positive effects on the city, including increased city revenue, increased employment, and increased ancillary effects such as tourism and services. In order for the public to reap the immediate benefits of the cannabis industry and to aid the developers through the process, the ordinance must take effect immediately. Since January 1, 2018 is quickly approaching, and several applicants, applicants will not be able to meet that deadline without this ordinance becoming effective immediately. So those are the findings, um, that are in your staff report, and they are also in the ordinance. One other thing, thank you, um, that the city manager has reminded me, is that this ordinance does not preclude people from entering into development agreements. The city, under a different title, uh, excuse me, under a different section, can do so. Uh, it doesn't preclude that at all. What it does do is just eliminates the requirement for medical marijuana, um, developers to enter into development agreements for developments on raw land. With that, if there are any questions, or if I've missed anything, I am here to answer any questions.
I have one person in the queue, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got two quick questions. We've always seen CUPs and developmental agreements in parallel at the same time. Is the statement that you can do CUPs quicker than you can do developmental agreements?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be faster, correct.
The second question is from Mr. Betts, and I will gladly ask this for him. Does this preclude bonding or money being put up for any infrastructure improvements?
No, it does not.
It'll still be in the CUPs?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Betts? Okay. Um, I'll open the public hearing at this time and take public testimony. Would anybody like to speak to this item? State your name.
Paul DeBulatus with MSA Consulting. Uh, just wanted to reiterate, I, I would agree with what Jennifer said, to allow this to be optional would speed up the process, and, um, for all the reasons she stated, we've seen this with a lot of our clients who'll be interested in the change.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Dickerson? State your name.
Kenny Dickerson, Coach Hillen Holdings. Our experience with Coach Hillen, a larger project, we're bringing a specific plan, which would be in lieu of a development agreement, but because of the current ordinance, we're required to do a development agreement, a subdivision improvement agreement, a specific plan, a tentative map, a final map, and it's, it's been burdensome in the process and slowed down our approval process, so we would recommend that you get rid of them. Our specific plan will do that, but it didn't preclude us from having to go through the process of doing one and going through that wasted time, so we would highly recommend you getting rid of them.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll close the public comments at this time, we'll go to city council discussion. See no discussion? Anybody like to make a motion?
I don't have a comment.
I'm sorry, there is discussion.
No. I, I would also like to, uh, ensure that, you know, first off, I, I think, uh, I, I really do appreciate the fact that our development agreement does actually require those two items. It may sound like two items, but I think those two items are important, um, because this is a way that we have a guarantee as opposed to an option. However, I think if we're gonna be going this route, I'd also like to see that, um, the language around force majeure is also consistent, because I've noticed that on the development agreements, it varies from one development agreement to another, depending on what the developer, uh, wants to, wants to include, and sometimes it'll say, oh, well, if I'm in litigation, then I shouldn't have to necessarily abide to these terms until that's resolved, in which case, you know, the way that we see it is, we're the city, we have nothing to do with your, with your lawsuit, um, so you should still uphold your development agreement. Um, so I would definitely want to ensure that, that's consistent, even without a development agreement. If I may, Mr. Mayor, the force majeure clause only applies to the development agreement itself. So if the city, uh, decided to eliminate the requirement of the development agreement, um, the force majeure clause would be eliminated, because it's part of the development agreement itself. In which case, would...
In which case would, would there be stricter guidelines for that sort of situation? Or how would that work?
The, the, how it would be is for, for example, in a development agreement, if somebody were to come to the city alleging a breach of contract, and the developer says, hey, I'm trying to build, I'm trying to do something, but there's been a strike, and I can't get the wood that I need to build, he could allege, or he could actually say it as a defense that, hey, force majeure, there's a huge strike. Without the development agreement itself, there's no need for a force majeure, a force majeure clause. So if you are ridding it...
What was that?
It, it, it wouldn't, in a way, it wouldn't, the force majeure clause wouldn't, wouldn't be part of a project because it only applies to the development agreement contract.
So they would never be able to, to say that?
Couldn't use force majeure.
They, maybe they could use it in a separate context, I can't think of one off the top of my head right now, but generally force majeure is used in contracts.
So would benefit, what she, what she's concerned about is it benefits them to have a development agreement with force majeure in it rather than it does not?
Yes, correct.
All right, no one else in the queue, I will take a motion at this time if someone's willing to make it.
Well, I'll make a motion, we adopt an urgency ordinance of the city council amending chapter seventeen dot one eight zero medical marijuana facilities operation and location to eliminate the requirement for developers entering into developmental agreement in certain circumstances.
This is a urgency item, so four-fifth vote will need to be taken, four out of five would need to approve this for this item to move forth. Please, there's a vote, there's a motion and a second, please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes unanimously, and the urgency ordinance shall take effect immediately.
Item number fifteen is an ordinance of the city council, City Desert Hot Springs, amending chapter seventeen point one eight zero medical marijuana facilities operation location to eliminate the requirement for developers to enter into development agreement in certain circumstances. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is just pretty much the same ordinance without the, the urgency findings. This would be the regular ordinance, therefore, I'm not going to go ahead and redo the entire staff report. Thank you so much.
Any questions, is there any more questions to this? All right, we'll open the public hearing at this time, take public testimony, anybody like to speak to this item? Close the public hearing at this time, council member discussions, I see none, I'll accept the motion.
I'd like to set a motion to recommend from the planning commission to the city council to induce and approve for the first reading an ordinance of the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs, amending chapter seventeen dot one eight zero medical marijuana facilities operation and location to eliminate the requirement for developers to enter into developmental agreements in certain circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. McKee, is there a second? Any more discussion? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance shall return on September nineteenth for a second reading and adoption.
Thank you very much. Already administrative calendar now, we've already done item number sixteen, we'll move on to item number seventeen. Limited obligation improvement bond, City Desert Hot Springs Assessment District number ninety-two point one Aurora Vista, surplus funds after maturity. Administrative Services Director Joseph Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In November nineteen ninety-two, the Assessment District ninety-two dash one Aurora Vista was formed to provide financing for construction for street sewer water drainage and utilities for, for that area. The city issued bonds in the amount of nine, nine hundred seventy-five thousand sixty-two dollars to pay for those improvements, and over the years, the city has drawn down on those funds. We've had a surplus for a number of years, the balance, which is currently, for that particular fund, is three, thirty-three thousand three hundred ninety for those, for those properties assessed. We are recommending to return that amount to, to the property owners, the current property owners. The amount is going to vary from property to property depending on the analysis by our consultants on the benefits to, to that property.
Before we continue, where exactly is Aurora Vista?
This is the Rancho del Oro development.
Time out.
So it doesn't say Rancho del Oro?
No, it doesn't. It's the initial project.
This is the original development.
Sorry, I should have caught that before, before you, Mr. Betts.
It was the original development where I moved into.
Yes.
And I was, and I paid these.
So you possibly getting a reimbursement?
So, this is the area of Rancho del Oro?
Correct.
Okay, so I have a conflict because I have property within the subdivision?
You'll need to recuse yourself from item number seventeen and eighteen, and if you'd like to be excused for tonight, we'll be done.
Stick around because I have something for the, for the meeting.
So the question is to staff, is that Ms. Parks owned a piece of property there at one point in the original? Were you one of the original owners?
Yes.
So she might be receiving a...
She receiving any compensation?
No. All right, we'll move forth with that. You've had the staff report at this point, is there any questions to, to staff? Mr. McKee?
Yeah, I'd like to first say that I appreciate the work the staff's done on this. This has not been an easy item to work on because there were several discussions about how the payments would be made. I know that my colleague here, Yvonne Parks, had some questions about it, but I think there were some decisions made as, as to the fact if you sold your property, you were actually selling the property and whatever money existed with it to the new owner. There have been a number of people that have lived in various houses. It would be a nightmare to try and figure out who was where and who paid how much into the bond fund. It would, because, well, I understand. You can put in a request. In any case, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council authorizing refunding of the remaining surplus for Assessment District number ninety-two dash one Aurora Vista, limited obligation improvement bonds to properties within tract map two-three-eight-six-six that have been paid, the assessment securing the bonds based on the original assessment amount.
Is there a second? Any more discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm sorry, I believe you might have a person willing to, wanting to speak on this item.
I am completely sorry about that, I didn't take any testimony. Would anybody like to speak to this item? If you'd like to.
Hold the vote. Everybody withdraw their vote.
Don't, don't...
Thank you.
So, so sorry about that.
I am very happy, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. We liked those comments. Now, please vote.
Now we got to go through the whole thing again.
There it is.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, item number eighteen, limited obligation improvement bond, City Desert Hot Springs Assessment District number ninety-three point two Aurora Vista, surplus funds after maturity. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a very similar item, this is for Assessment District ninety-three two, was established roughly about a year later. The amount of surplus funds, funds that the, that the city is currently holding on to is twenty-three thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
All right, with that said, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council authorizing refunding of the remaining surplus funds for Assessment District number ninety-three dash two Aurora Vista, limited obligation improvement bonds to properties within tract map two-three-eight-six-six that have been paid, the assessment securing bonds based on the original assessment amount.
Is there a second? Any public comments? See no more with that, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, call Mr. Betts back in the room. We'll move on to future agenda items, okay?
If we, if you drive through the city and you look at the streetlights, they're barely emitting enough light to illuminate the ground directly beneath them, and we have other areas like parks and stuff that are very dark, except up at Veterans Park, which happens to be very bright and well-done. I don't know if it's just in conflict with the night sky ordinance or what's going on, but the council needs to set some direction, like that has come back as some agenda item if it, if it is, has to do with the night sky ordinance, that we get some kind of discussion to deal with that. But it's just, you drive up Palm Drive and I'm, I'm just noticing these lights and they're just not doing anything. What if we miss, turn them off for the amount of electricity it's costing us and a little bit of light we're getting from them?
All right, future agenda, anybody else? Public comments, anybody didn't speak at the beginning of the meeting may speak now on items on the agenda. I see none. We'll be adjourned till September nineteenth.